Tonight we want to take a moment and recognize our United States military. November is the month that we remember and honor our veterans and the men and women currently serving in our armed forces. Their bravery, commitment, and patriotism are the reasons our nation remains secure, and we are deeply indebted to them. Our color guard tonight has been with us numerous times in the past, and we appreciate their help in celebrating the significance of Veterans Day 2012. I ask that our audience stand and place their right hand over their hearts. I would like to introduce Weapons Company's Second Battalion, 23rd Marines, United States Please join me in the pledge. Pledge allegiance by... Raise your hands. Can I have the city clerk please do the roll call?
Councilmember Fox?
Here.
Councilmember Price?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Bill De La Peña?
Present.
Mayor Irwin?
Present. And requests for continuance of any public hearings or agenda items, there are none. And now we will begin the special presentation section of our city council meeting. To begin our special presentations, I would like to ask Nancy Nevitt to join me. Nancy? Seroptimist International of the Caneo is part of a worldwide group of women in 120 countries who contribute time and financial support to projects benefiting the status of women and girls throughout the world. Tonight, we are pleased to present the Seroptimists with a proclamation recognizing two critical issues. We are proclaiming October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and November as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Nancy is the president of Seroptimist International of the Caneo, and she's here to tell us more about what's been done in these areas.
Thank you. Oh, thank you. I am Nancy Nevitt. I am a resident of Thousand Oaks, and I am very proud to represent Seroptimist International of the Caneo at this meeting. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. We are a volunteer professional women's club dedicated to improving the lives of women and girls in the community and around the world. We raise awareness for breast cancer by donating funds to the Caneo Free Clinic for free mammograms, and we lead the way to stopping domestic violence in the home and at the workplace by providing purple cards telling the signs of violence and where women can get help. Also, we help organize and participate in a Stop Sex Trafficking event that provides information to the public. We are advocates for women and girls. We raise money for various charitable nonprofits. We also select individuals to give grants to. Annually, we present the Violet Richardson Award to a female high school student to acknowledge her volunteer service work in the community and/or at school. Beyond that, we give the Women's Opportunity Award to a woman who is in school, head of household, and has overcome great adversity, which often unfortunately includes domestic violence. I am proud to accept the proclamation on behalf of the Seroptimist International of the Caneo membership and all of the women and girls that we have given a hand up to over the past 31 years. Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers.
On behalf of the city council, I have a proclamation in honor of National Breast Cancer Awareness Month and End Domestic Violence Month for our Seroptimist representative. We are so appreciative of all the work you do in the community.
Thank you.
We'll take a picture. For our final presentation this evening, we are recognizing the 30th anniversary of a group that has played an important role in supporting the performing arts at the Civic Arts Plaza. The Alliance for the Arts began their work developing support for the theaters even before the theaters were built. The Alliance has been an excellent partner throughout the years. It is very exciting to celebrate their success, and I would like to ask Barry McCombe to come up right now and tell us a little bit about the accomplishments of the Alliance for the Arts.
Thank you, Mayor Irwin, members of the council. It's with great pleasure that I'm able to extend my congratulations to the Alliance for the Arts on the occasion of their 30th anniversary, which is quite a feat for any nonprofit organization, but even more so for a nonprofit in the arts sector. In my role as the Cultural Affairs Director, I've had the privilege of working very closely with the Alliance on a daily basis, and I have to say I've been very impressed by the dedication and hard work of both their Board of Directors and their staff. This unique public-private partnership between the City of Thousand Oaks and the Alliance continues to serve as an example for other communities across the country. On behalf of the hundreds of thousands of patrons and more than 50,000 schoolchildren who enjoy performances each year in the Fred Cavali and Janet and Ray Sher Forum Theaters, I would like to say thank you to the Alliance. Thank you to the hundreds of individuals who have donated their time over the past 30 years to serve as an Alliance Board Member or volunteer, and also thank you to the residents of the Thousand Oaks community for their financial support and commitment to the arts that they have demonstrated over the last 30 years. This unique collaboration between the city, the Alliance, and the community guarantees that the arts will remain a vibrant component of what makes Thousand Oaks such a great place to live and work in. Congratulations to the Alliance for the Arts and to Tom Cohen, their Chair of their Board of Directors, for all that you've done over the last 30 years.
And I have a commendation in honor of the 30th anniversary of the Alliance for the Arts, and I'm going to be presenting it to the current Chair, Tom Cohen, and I know you would like to say a few words, Tom.
Thank you, Barry. Thank you, Mayor Irwin. Congratulations on your reelection. Really happy to hear about that. I'm here on behalf of the Board of Directors for the Alliance for the Arts. It's an absolute privilege for me to be here to accept this commendation. I haven't been a participant all 30 years, but my family sure has, and it's been a great ride, and it's amazing to see what this facility has done for our community. We've had great performances here. We've allowed our local performers to perform here, and we want to continue to see that success grow. And we know that with Barry at the helm, that that's going to continue. We know that with a solid city council, as a partner of the Alliance, we just know that this is going to continue to be a very good thing for our community. So thank you very much, and I look forward to the next 30 years.
And since it is the 30th anniversary, we are going to ask all the council members to come up and take a picture. Do you have other representatives here from the Alliance?
I think I saw Susan. You know, there's one other thing I want to mention. We're having a gala Friday night, the Pearls and Diamonds Gala we have. The community is welcome to join us. You know, please contact the Alliance office.
All right. Item six is public comments, and can I have the city clerk please announce?
This is a time and place for public comments, so speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. Speakers for public hearing items shall be called and heard during the public hearing. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole, and all documents for city council and the official city record should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Under state law, public comment matters may not be considered by the council unless listed on the agenda, but may be referred to the city manager for administrative follow-up. We have one person who has presented a card, and pursuant to council standards, the speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. And our speaker is Mr. Nick Kidway. Good evening, Mr. Kidway.
Good evening, Mayor Irwin. Congratulations on your tremendous victory. Nick "Egba" Kidway, resident of Newbury Park, Director of Concerned Citizens, House of Oaks, begin in the name of God, who is most beneficial, most merciful. Just start with the overhead, which I like to do to your TV. This is the Caneo Creek Development. It's Caneo creek.org. This is one of the things that just about everybody in this community supports, including our wonderful city manager. By support, I mean the Caneo Valley Org to stop this monstrosity that would alter our lifestyle going down the grade. It's something that needs to be stopped. This is a citizens' group that's done a wonderful job. They went overboard, and last time I got an email, they were in debt by $5,000. And so if some people from Thousand Oaks want to help them, go on the website. The next hearing, it's horrible the way government treats citizens. I went to the hearing, which was in September, I believe, and there were 300 people. I could only get into the hall. I mean, it was a secondary hall. There were so many people. And so I decided to just go home, and I thought maybe they will have a hearing a couple days later or the next week. But the next hearing is December 4th on this issue. And the only thing that people understand is Bois Christmas, you know? Send an email, do something about it. Don't just watch Hannity or Rachel Maddow, thinking that you're doing your part. Want to congratulate the election victors. I did try to help some candidates. One was successful, another wasn't. There is a problem, or problems. The ordinance to control financing and science, et cetera, was done in 98. I mean, it seems like yesterday to me, but it's been, you know, 15 years. Plus, I mean, it's horrible. What is the worth of paper when people don't follow it? I mean, the ordinance says that if there are any problems, the city clerk would ask the district attorney to investigate. And in fact, the city attorney's office, with the help of finance, is supposed to do an audit. But, I mean, nobody challenges the clerk or the city attorney that writes to me, "Well, Mr. Kidway, go to the district attorney." I mean, it's horrible. I mean, we are losing our country. I mean, I'm the only one speaking on public comments, so there should be more people who should care and be involved. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. Item seven is the consent calendar. Ms. Bill De La Peña?
Yes, I would like to pull item 7F.
7F. Anybody else? Mr. Price, would you like to?
I move the balance of the consent calendar.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mayor, we have a speaker.
Oh, yes. Mr. Kidway, I apologize.
Nick Kidway, resident of Newbury Park, still Director of Concerned Citizens, House of Oaks. Good evening, Mayor Fox. Oh, I'm sorry. Maybe you'll be the next mayor, who knows? You look like the mayor. And the people are enjoying. Well, let me start off with the H, establishing residential and commercial solid rate schedule. This is just effective January 1st. So I don't really know, I should know how much the increase would be, or there's no increase. I thought it was postponed, but, you know, I'm not an expert on the city council matters. But I do know that E.J. Harrison gave four checks to the mayor. I think the poor guys did not know that they could give 380. They gave 250 apiece. I think one person in the end, I think, did come up with 380. He was pointed out that that's the maximum that's allowed, and don't be misers. I mean, I mean, what's 380 when you have contracts worth millions of dollars? Millions. And it's, they go on forever and ever. In fact, Crown Disposable lady sat there, and she's, they are trying to nose their way into our city, and lo and behold, they gave the 380. They knew how to. And these donations don't just fall out of the sky. You send letters or make phone calls, right, Mr. Fox? That's how it happens. And, you know, what is $1,200 when you are willing to spend $16,000 of your own money? I mean, it's not going to influence the decision, right? You know? I believe in the two ferry. I believe there's no corruption going on over here. This is a very clean, nice city, right? Thank you, sir. Thank you. Will we ever change the minutes so that they are American, so that there's at least one line there? I mean, you go to Cameroyle, like the Caneo Creek people were there, and they have American minutes. I mean, I mean, as an immigrant, I mean, we had the four service people here, you have the flag there. I mean, why do you, I mean, why cannot even, it's a so-called minority member who wants to have a majority, why can't she speak up and say, "This is wrong." I mean, this is plain wrong. This is un-American. I mean, this is, I mean, Tony Dole's, ask him. I talked to him on the street corner for half an hour. He's an immigrant that literally threw from communism with his whole family. I'm not that lucky or unlucky. I didn't have to flee that way. But in this, you go to the school board, they will denigrate you and not write your name. They will put down, "Mr. Kidway spoke against the city council." No, I'm sorry. Speaker number one spoke against that. They give you a number, just like Malcolm X had done. This is what is happening. Folks, get involved. I mean, if you are upset at the election results, please be involved. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. Okay, vote on Mr. Joel's, Mr. Price's motion.
Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you. I just wanted to bring attention to item 7F, which deals with a rebalancing of positions within finance and public works. And I just wanted the Human Resources Director, Mr. Gary Rogers, to explain what exactly is happening and how much more the employees are getting paid.
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember Bill De La Peña. Routinely and regularly, the organization is looking at our staffing, partly to make sure that we're conducting the work in the most effective way possible. Also, certainly as our ongoing budget concerns have been foremost in our minds, we're trying to seek ways to get the work done in as efficient a way as possible. Tonight, the Finance and Public Works Departments have some proposed changes to the staffing, authorized positions that were included in the adopted budget, and we're asking the council authority for these changes. We're not asking for additional budget dollars because we have made other changes within the staffing configurations, which will offset any increased cost associated with these changes that we have proposed tonight. The Finance Department in their customer service area is seeking to have an accounting specialist fill a position at that level in lieu of a lower position. But they've made a number of other changes within the department that actually resulted in savings into the tens of thousands of dollars. In the Public Works Department, the wastewater treatment facility, we are asking authority to essentially overfill a wastewater treatment operator, too, with an operations supervisor position. There's currently an operations and maintenance manager position, but as a result, that's overseeing the day-to-day operations of the facility. As a result of our expansion of our program into gas production and our ongoing need to take a strong look at our capital projects, we're asking that a operations supervisor position be established that will oversee the day-to-day and then allow this operations manager position to focus a bit more on these other areas. Again, we're not seeking additional monies. There's monies available in the budget. And again, this is something that we're doing routinely throughout the organization in every department. The reason we're coming to you tonight is that these positions are actually not authorized in the budget, and that's why we're seeking the adjustment in the authorized position and not a change in the budget.
Okay, thank you. I understand that overall there is a savings. I just wanted staff to explain the salary increase, which is now going from 32 at the high end per hour to $42 per hour for the position you just described. And then for finance, it's $26 maximum to only 27. So the public works has a higher increase, but again, overall, there is a savings.
Right, correct. And I guess the thing to also emphasize is these positions are vacant, and they will be filled through internal promotion.
Thank you for clarifying that. And with that, I move approval of item 7F.
Vote, please.
Motion carries 4-0.
Item 8A, Committee, Commission, and Board Reports. And we are going to have the Chair of our Grants Committee, Mr. David Need, doing the
Actually, you get his understudy.
Oh, okay. Ms. Angelini.
It's Wilson now. I know, I do that, too. Mayor Irwin and members of the city council and very hardworking staff. I'm Stephanie Wilson. I am, I serve on the Grants Committee, and I'm David's understudy tonight. So just going to move this out of my face. We had a great time on the Grants Committee. The Cultural Affairs Commission is now working on the grants for the Community Events Endowment Fund and the Alliance for the Arts Performing Grants. Those performing grants are actually credits towards the theaters and use of the theaters. The CEF grants, Community Events Endowment Fund grants, are for arts groups and community groups, and I was there in 1997 when Councilmember Fox held a meeting and decided how we were going to allocate that money way back then. So I've always been an advocate of these grants, and I'm very happy and proud to be here. We had 44 nonprofit organizations apply for funding for 60 grants. They asked for $420,550, and we only had $175,000 to give, $85,000 for the CEF and $90,000 for the Alliance for the Arts. And when I say only, that's a very generous amount for our city and our Alliance for the Arts to be giving to our local groups. So I'm really grateful that we have this money to allocate. We reviewed every application ahead of our meeting. We went over them. We graded them. We fought about them and pounded the table. It was a very exciting conversation. And in the end, we granted 36 groups Community Event Endowment Fund grants, and we granted 16 groups performance grants. And those, surprisingly enough, that $90,000 from the Alliance for the Arts, only slightly more than half is for performances in the Cavali Theater, and the rest is for performances in this theater, which means we're using the Forum Theater, and our community groups are using the Forum Theater, and we're very excited about that. What's in front of you tonight to approve is not only the Community Events Endowment Fund grants and the performing arts grants from the Alliance for the Arts, but also our system for next time. Because, as you know, the Cultural Affairs Commission is only two years old, and we're seeing things through new eyes, and we're making the world better. Or we like to think so. So we would like to move up our schedule for when we give those grants away, so that our groups can plan their season, knowing that they either have the money or they don't. And so that's also in front of you. I understand there was a change in a date on one of them. That's an attachment to yours, and you have that information. But if there's a question about that, it's, I think, just only about the date, and I have staff, I have Gary Minson, Barry McCombe over there to help me out. So anyway, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer anything. I have the whole list here. If there's any questions about who's on it and why, or what's going on, I'm glad to answer.
Questions for Ms. Wilson? So this is the first year you actually were able to distribute both grants?
This is the second year. We did this last year as well, but last year it was like, we were really getting our feet wet in doing both of them, and this year we can't, it was, we really assessed where we need to make the changes in the dates, so that we can hopefully provide the funding or the understanding that they'll get the funding before their season begins.
But it certainly seems better to have one group do both of these sets of grants.
It worked out really well. I think it works out well because we can look at the whole scope of everything, so...
All right. We have a couple of speakers, and our speaker is Sandy Galen. Good evening, Ms. Galen.
Hi. It's Sandy Galen, Newbury Park. And I would just like to start off by extending the New West Symphony's congratulations to the Alliance for the Arts on their 30th anniversary. It's a very exciting time for them. The New West Symphony has asked for funding for our Masterpiece Series and for our Children's Symphonic Adventures concerts. And this year, in January, we're doing a fantastic photo symphony in our Masterpiece Series, Visions of America. And our children's concerts will be called America the Beautiful. And I have to say that there is nothing more exciting than sitting in the Cavali Theater when it's filled with third and fourth graders and hearing them applaud and clap in rhythm and bounce in their seats and be excited about classical music. And I just want to thank the city for your support previously and do hope that you'll continue. We really appreciate it, and it's a fantastic thing that the community can participate in.
Thank you. And our last speaker is Tom Cohen.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmember...
Councilmembers, Tom Cohen, here again on behalf of the Alliance for the Arts. This is my favorite part of being a part of the Alliance, is the ability to help the local performing arts groups with grants, get onstage and do their performances. I think that's one of the early issues that the community grappled with when this facility was built, and we were just really excited to be, to see that it continue. And we're also grateful that the Cultural Affairs Commission has taken on this role. This is a role that the Alliance handled for many years before, so we're glad to hand that off. But we're also glad to be able to write the check. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Ms. Bill de la Peña.
Thank you. I have a question that's probably more suited for staff. I just wanted to be clear that these funds are coming from the Alliance for the Arts? For the, for the cultural programs, the grant that they are giving?
Well, the grants for the theater credits, that's actually coming from the Alliance. It's part of the $300,000 we receive each year to underwrite operations.
Okay. And then for other organizations, such as a faith-based organization, I saw some others that, like hospice for the Conejo, those are coming out of the CDBG bank, so to speak, and it's completely separate from what is going on here tonight?
Correct.
Correct? Okay, just wanted to be clear. Thank you very much.
The first, the first grant is from the endowment. And then the, the grants for social services is a separate endowment also.
Yeah, that's, but I did see hospice on here, which is why I was asking. I thought that that was perhaps, I don't know why the hospice was listed.
The Hospice of the Conejo is one of the recipients of the Community Events Endowment Fund grants, which are also determined by the Cultural Affairs Commission at the same time as the performance grants.
So the other community-based organizations are then part of the social services grant portion that comes from CDBG?
I think that the grant that you're referring to, those grants have to fund an event or community activity. So they can actually be put on by any sort of organization in the community and still qualify for one of the CEF grants.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
No.
I will move approval of the report 8A.
All right. Vote please.
Motion carries four zero.
We're onto Department Reports. Department Report 9A, Ventura County Clerk Services at the City of Thousand Oaks. And our city clerk will be presenting the report. Ms. Lawrence?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, Ventura County Clerk Mark Lunn approached the city seeking our interest in collaborating with the county to bring certain county clerk functions to an East County site. Currently, county clerk services are only available at the government center located in Ventura. The city agrees that it would be beneficial to provide county services to local and neighboring residents at our facility. The city clerk department has sufficient office space to accommodate a county employee on a part-time basis to offer such services as real property recording, vital records and official record copies, marriage license issuance, and fictitious business name statement filings. Marriage licenses will be issued on an appointment basis effective January 8. The county would be offering these services from 9:00 to 3:00 p.m. on Tuesdays and Thursdays. A use agreement between the county and the city is currently being finalized, allowing for the county's use of the city technology, such as our phones, internet, and copier, as well as use of an office space in the city clerk department. $2,400 will be paid annually by the county to the city for the first two years of the agreement, and $2,520 annually for the third and fourth year of the agreement. After the fourth year, the annual rate will be renegotiated. There's also a 60-day cancellation clause should either party desire to terminate the agreement. The city clerk department looks forward to bring, to working with the county to bring these highly sought-after services to eastern Ventura County for the convenience of our residents. Staff is requesting authority for the city manager to execute the use agreement with the county once it's finalized. I would also like to take the opportunity, we have David Vanaswell, manager of operations for the county clerk and recorder here in the office, in the chambers, sorry, and wanted to thank him and his staff for the excellent election services that they provide to the city. And we've had a good working relationship in the election area, and we look forward to working with the county in this new venture. And with that, David would like to say a few words, and we're both available to answer any questions.
Mayor Irwin and councilmembers, thank you for having us. My, my name is David Valenswell. I am the division manager for the clerk and recorder's office. Mark's not here, so I tried to make my hair white, but it just didn't work, so, but he apologized for not being here. He had a family emergency last minute today, so you have me. But we are very excited. We look forward to this partnership with the City of Thousand Oaks. When Mark was elected in 2010, this is one of his goals, was to bring services to the East County, and this location is very smart. We had looked at the City of Simi Valley a few years before, when Phil Schmidt was the elected official. And when he came on board, I told him, Mark, we need something right here because this is the center hub, and so the residents of Moore Park and Simi Valley can come right here to Thousand Oaks. And then the residents from Camarillo can pick or come down to Ventura to have services. As Linda mentioned, and we want to thank Linda's office, the city manager's office, and you, Mayor Irwin, for considering this, because I know Mark and you've talked about this. We think this is going to be a great partnership, as we will be providing marriage services, official record recordings, fictitious business names, and vital records copies. One little thing is, we perform over 1,700 wedding ceremonies in our office in Ventura County. We're not going to be doing that right now, but for the residents of Thousand Oaks, we issue over 4,500 marriage licenses every year. So we stay pretty busy, and we look forward to providing the service here in Ventura County and in the East County residence. So we're very happy. And as Linda said, if everything goes to plan and we can get the technology part of it going, our goal is to start services Tuesdays and Thursdays, starting January 8, 2013. If you have any questions from me, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Any questions? All right. Thank you. It is, it is very exciting that Mark followed through on his promise. We're always happy to have additional services for the residents of the city, so we are really appreciative that this is working out. Thank you.
I really think it's going to be a success. Thank you.
We have one speaker, Mr. Kidway.
Nick Kidway, resident of Newbury Park, director of concern city in Thousand Oaks. I commend the city and the county for this partnership agreement. Glad that you're not asking for rent, just, or the labor costs are additional. This is a very reasonable amount of dollars. However, I don't think that this is enough. We need much more, and we are entitled to much more. I will read the mission statement of our wonderful city. Quote, "Extraordinary citizens, extraordinary service to the citizens. We service is our purpose and product." If you are providing extraordinary service, why is it that you have taken away the marriage licenses? And some people, newcomers might not know it, but it was taken away 15 years ago. We used to do it. It's not a huge burden on the city, in my humble opinion. And some of the other things that they will be doing, like recording, et cetera, is fine, but the marriage is a very basic thing. And I originally was going to say about, we are hurting our young people, but nowadays, you know, people who are 80 and 90 are getting married, so it affects everybody. And I don't know if having a part-time clerk would create lines with the marriage, as well as the other fees, I think that they'll be doing. Since you already have the gentleman here, and maybe Mr. Lunn would be hearing, too, and we just concluded the election, we should really make some changes and, and be more resident-friendly and also help in the democratic process. Having no fee for, whether it's the city council, or the park district, or school board, is kind of a double-edged sword. I don't like to have taxes, I don't like fees, but every Tom, Dick, and Harry wants to run for council, and they don't want to spend the shoe leather or even write a $500 check to get, or a $1,000 check to get their candidate's statement in the ballot. So perhaps there should be a fee, and it could be tied to the candidate's statement that is printed by the, by, by the county. And also, I would implore that, since you are saying you are providing service behind the internet age, the candidate's statement should be on the front page of the website and be there up until the election. In fact, you are charging me three bucks, four bucks for TOTV. Have the candidates speak for 15 minutes, be, give what they say, so that people can make a good decision. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. Ms. Bill de la Peña.
I just had a quick question. I'm assuming, after reading this and listening to this, that it will be a county employee that will be, I'm looking at the wrong staff. I need to look at you, yes. Will be provided by, by the county, obviously.
Yes, it will be a part-time county, well, it will be a county employee working here part-time.
Mm-hmm. Okay. No, I, I think this is a wonderful change in philosophy now, that, that we are embracing county services, whereas a few years ago, we were rather, had a different attitude toward that. So it's very good to see that progress is finally being made in having a cooperative partnership with, with the county. Good.
Mr. Price, would you like to make a motion?
I will, if Mayor Pro Tem de la Peña doesn't wish to. I would move approval of, what is this, nine, or is this 9A?
Comments to motion? Vote please.
The motion carries four zero.
Item 10A, public hearing, Miller Ranch Project. And can I have the city clerk, please, open the hearing?
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider. Agenda item 10A, Miller Ranch Project, zone change 2010-70185, tentative track map 2010-70187, residential plan development 2010-70179, oak tree permit 2010-70181, landmark tree permit 2012-70078. The applicant is KSK Investments LP, located the east side of Upper Ranch Road, approximately 350 feet north of Canaan Road. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding this public hearing. All documents for the city council and the official city record should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking, and speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. We have 16 people who have presented speaker cards and pursuant to council standards. The applicant is allowed 15 minutes with a five-minute rebuttal, and remaining speakers are allowed two minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
And Ms. Pam Leopold is going, our senior planner, is going to be doing the report. Ms. Leopold?
Thank you, Mayor Irwin and members of the council. For your consideration this evening, it's the Miller Ranch Project. It's located east side of Upper Ranch Road, approximately 350 feet north of Canaan Road. The property is approximately 27.29 acres, generally rectangular in shape. This is unincorporated territory. It's surrounded by land within the City of Thousand Oaks, and it's not a part of the North Ranch specific plan. It's under separate private ownership. How's that? Thank you. The council is requested to certify the environmental impact report, number 330. There is a pre-zoning request to RPD 0.56 units per acre, net acre, single-family detached, and a track map, which allows for 15 lots, 14 residential, and one open space lot, an RPD permit, which will allow the future construction of 14 single custom homes, an oak tree permit to remove one tree and dead wood and encroachment to the protected zone of five oak trees, and also a landmark tree permit, which allows for pruning of one tree and encroachment within the protected zones of two other landmark trees. This aerial shows the project location. On the west side of the project is Upper Ranch Road, and that comprises approximately nine lots. To the south is the Ventura County Fire Station and another custom home. And then to the, to the east side is a project that was approved. It's Track 5707 for five custom lots, and it comprised 13.32 acres. Looking northeast on the project site, you can see the single-family ranch house on the knoll and several different outbuildings that were constructed during the ranching activities. This is looking southeast on the project site, towards Track 5707. And this is looking southwest of the project site to Track 4023. Looking west again, this is Track 4023, and to the north is the Edison Isment unpaved access road. The planning process essentially was the, on June 22, 2010, the city council initiated the annexation. They granted requests to process the entitlements, applications concurrently with the pre-zoning application. September 10, 2012, the planning commission recommended approval. This evening is the council hearing for the final consideration, and in the future, LAFCO would consider annexation request if the city decides to adopt the pre-zoning. The existing county zoning is county open space, 20-acre minimum, with scenic resource protection overlay zone. Proposed city zoning is RPD with a maximum of 0.56 dwelling units per net acre. Proposed zoning is consistent with the general plan designation of very low-density residential and consistent with adjacent city zoning. This is a slide of the tentative track map, showing the 14 lots and the residential lots and the open space lot on the north side. There are two access points, one at the lower southwest corner and one at the lower southeast corner. The lot size is consistent with adjacent tracks, as shown in this table. The residential plan development, essentially, these are custom estate homes, nine single-story homes with 21-foot maximum height, five two-story homes with 27-foot maximum height, two gated entrances, and a 20-foot-wide landscape privacy buffer is planned on the west side, adjacent to Track 4023. The residential plan development, the pad size is larger than the adjacent tracks, and as this table shows, the median pad size. All these, all the custom homes that are proposed are subject to individual architectural design review through the precise plan design process, and this is a similar process that was used for custom homes in Track 4023 and also in, it would be in Track 5707. This is a photo simulation of the proposed development. There are two streets proposed. There's A Court and B Court. Again, there were nine one-story homes and five two-story homes proposed for this site. The oak tree permit The oak tree permit consists of all onsite oak trees are preserved in place, removal of one off-site oak tree, and this is necessary for the gated entry off of Canaan Road. There's also requests to encroach within the protected zone or deadwood on five oak This is Lot 6, oak tree number 667, and it was, it's being requested for encroachment of a property line fencing. This is the slide of the oak tree, which is off-site. It's requested for removal. It's oak tree number 123C. The landmark tree permit consists of pruning one black walnut in the open space lot and encroach within the protected zone of one black walnut tree and one toyon tree for lots 12 and 13. This is a photo of the black walnut in the open space lot. It has been previously damaged by fire and decay. It is in hazardous condition, and pruning will benefit the tree as proposed in the, in the project. This is a photo of the toyon tree to the left of the aviary. It's proposed for encroachment due to the aviary removal and the removal of the concrete foundation which is nearby. This is a photo of the black walnut tree, which is on Lot 12. There is minor encroachment proposed for this tree with a retaining wall construction. The EIR overview originally prepared was a mitigated NIG deck, number 280. Both staff and the applicant agreed that an EIR should be prepared in response to comments on the MND. The EIR reviewed all potentially significant impacts, including aesthetics, air quality, biological resources, land use, and traffic. Also, all impacts are able to be mitigated to less than a significant level, and all mitigation measures incorporated into the conditions of approval for the project. The EIR project alternatives, SEQA requires an alternative analysis to identify options that could avoid or reduce significant impacts, and after mitigation, the project has no significant environmental impacts. There's also a no project. Ventura County land use and zoning would remain as-is, and an alternate, alternative location for the, that was called out in the EIR, no other potentially feasible sites were available to meet the applicant's objectives. There's also a modified site design. This was to eliminate three residential lots and increase the open space lot size. This would provide the following benefits. Brush clearance would be outside of the SCE easement, minor decrease in Class II impacts. This is also the environmentally superior alternative, and the applicant states this is not economically feasible and does not meet project objectives. Conclusion, essentially, the proposed density is consistent with the general plan. Proposed lot size and pad size are comparable to or larger than adjacent tracks, and the applicant has met with the Westlake North Property Owners Association nearby residents in an effort to address concerns. I recommend that the council certify the final EIR and adopt the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, introduce the ordinance to approve the pre-zoning to RPD 0.56 units per net acre, single-family detached, and adopt resolutions to approve the entitlements for the Miller Ranch Project, subject to all recommended conditions. This concludes staff's report. Staff is available for any questions.
Questions? Questions of staff? Mr. Price?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Track 5707, you mentioned that that was zoned for how many, how many lots are there? And how large is that parcel?
That is 13.32 acres. The house sizes were proposed and approved, well, they're proposed because they would be subject to the precise plan of design guidelines application. The house sizes were proposed between 6,011,500 square feet. The zoning is residential plan development, 0.38, 38 dwelling units per net acre.
Thank you.
And that was for five lots.
Ms. Bill Delapena?
I was just looking at some of, of many of the concerns or letters that were written to address the draft EIR, and I'm wondering whether, in reading the attorney for the app, for the appellant, basically, with the resident's latest concerns, if they, and I didn't read it until it was emailed to us, I think, yesterday, were they truly addressed in detail?
I think I can answer that question. We didn't actually receive that until today, so we haven't had a chance to really look at it carefully, but I didn't see anything there that we didn't previously analyze in our response to comments.
I mean, there is a litany of concerns regarding the EIR and whether it's, can actually be certified based on, you know, a lack of information or a lack of thorough research, among them endangered species and whatnot, and reference is made to another case which was fought in court in, here in Thousand Oaks regarding the bronchus milkvetch, and then we have this, this rat also. But I'm wondering whether you feel that to save the habitat has been adequately addressed?
Well, in regard to the wood rat, saving the habitat of the wood rat is incompatible with the project, essentially. So we have got mitigations in there to basically remove the wood rat and place it in adjacent habitat. In regard to the milkvetch, it's, I'll have to tell you a little bit about the biology of the milkvetch. It's a very unusual plant. It's a short-lived perennial, and so it lives for four to five years, and then it produces seeds and dies, and the seeds are maintained in a seed bank in the soil. The seed banks that we're familiar with in this area are north of this site by quite a bit. They're in our open space, and we get good populations of, or good germination of the plant in that area. What happens is with this plant is you get drift down of seeds from adjacent seed beds, and you may get plants coming up here and there in inadequate habitat, and that's what's occurred here. The plant that we did find on the site, and we found it ourselves, it was found by staff, is growing in an area that the plant could not persist in anyway. It's in a pasture, and this plant normally grows on arid slopes. So what we're maintaining is that there's no significant seed bank in the area, and that there may be a couple of plants coming up here and there, but it's, it's not a significant aspect in terms of the plant. I can go on at length if you wish.
Okay. No, that's, that's fine. But I'm wondering also that whether the EIR adequately addressed alternative sites or density. It says that alternative site, density was not examined because it didn't meet the applicant's objectives.
Well, the-
And whatever that objective is, which is, of course, maximum profit.
Well, that's, that's not one of the objectives they listed, but the alternatives that are required by SEQA, and basically, they are designed to reduce Class 1 impacts. We don't think there are any Class 1 impacts, so first of all, that makes the alternatives less important than they would be otherwise. So we suggested, you know, three different alternatives, and the alternatives have to basically fulfill the applicant's objectives, at least to some extent. They have to reduce impacts, and they have to be feasible, and so that's why we listed those alternatives. I don't think there's any need for any more than what we have.
Less density, rather than no development at all? That was not an option?
One of the options was to reduce the project by three units, which would provide less density, and the applicant has gone on record as indicating that would not meet their financial goals.
Correct, as I read in the letter by the other law firm. So in essence, yes, no maximum profit. Didn't have to be stated in writing, but obviously, one can read between the lines. And what about the claim by the resident's attorney that the city does not have, is not forced to annex the land and can leave it as-is, and that it is not really a true island?
I think we are looking at, in terms of annexation, we're looking at it as a straight annexation, not an island annexation. Even though it is, you know, for all intents and purposes, surrounded by the city, it's not considered an island according to the LAFCO procedures, so we're just looking at it as a straight annexation.
And we're not referring to it as an island anymore, as we have in previous correspondence and staff reports?
No.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Mr. Fox?
Yeah, my question's for the city attorney. I just want to follow up on the issue of the annexation process. Maybe you can explain to the council exactly what discretion or what flexibility the council has in asking for properties to be annexed. I recognize this is in our sphere of influence. Do we need to have findings, or can we simply look at a piece of property and determine, yes, we want it annexed, or no, we don't?
Well, under, under, under state law, LAFCO has the ultimate decision or discretion whether or not to annex property into the city. Cities, there's two ways to annex property, or generally two ways. One can be city-initiated, and one can be property owner-initiated. In this case, we have the property owner that contacted the city, wants to develop this property, and at the same time, wanted to annex the property and also request a concurrent processing of the zone change and all the underlying entitlements. So back in 2010, city council initiated annexation proceedings by adoption of Resolution 2010-61. Typically, when we get a request for annexation, we look at our general plan, we look, we look at the guidelines for orderly development, which we've, all of cities in the county has adopted in addition to the county, and according to the guidelines for orderly development, if you have property that's an unincorporated territory but is within the city's sphere of influence, as is the case here, cities will adopt a general plan designation, which the city did in this case, it's zero to two dwelling units per acre. But then, in order to process the entitlements, we have to pre-zone it. So that's why the applicant came to the city to ask for, to submit the pending applications, the pre-zoning, and the track map, and the RPD, and all of the oak tree and landmark tree permits. Annexation is a legislative decision, so it's discretion, it's discretionary by the city. It's not a vested right. An applicant or a property owner has no vested rights to have a property annexed into the city. So it's purely a legislative decision. It's also subject to referendum. In fact, even if the city moved forward with trying to pre-zone the property, it's subject to referendum because it is a legislative act. So there is much discretion that the city council has on whether or not to annex property into its own city, and typically, what the city will do is look at its general plan goals and policies, and again, any other criteria or policies that have been adopted, such as the guideline for orderly development.
Okay. And so if I understood you correctly, we, the council does have wide discretion on the annexation request. Ultimately, it's a LAFCO decision. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, very good.
Any other questions? We have our speaker cards, and the first speaker is the applicant, and the applicant will have 15 minutes. And that is Mr. Leonard Liston.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor Irwin, council, staff. Leonard Liston, I'm president of LC Engineering Group, located here in Thousand Oaks at 889 Pierce Court. I've been in the city here for, actually, 32 years, and dating back to when I was in college, some of the studies we did was doing some of the initial surveys when they were originally extending Westlake Boulevard into North Ranch, the time North Ranch didn't even exist. So I date back, kind of date myself, but that's how long I've been here. And over the past 30-plus years, I have provided engineering services on hundreds of properties in the North Ranch area, including some of the properties that are surrounding and immediately adjacent to this property. And again, I've been here since the start of North Ranch. I've also personally developed four custom homes in the North Ranch area, some of them just a street or two over from this property, so I'm, you know, quite familiar with, with the area. And I'm here representing KSK Homes, the owners of Miller Ranch, includes Mark Senchuk and Ron Kestenbaum, who are here in the audience, and they are here to answer any questions should they come up as, as we go through this hearing. Also here tonight is a member of the Miller family, who's going to speak after me, Jane Russell Wuster, and she will be providing some historical perspective, which is very interesting, on the Miller Ranch and the family that's been here for generations that's owned it. And again, also here in the audience, we have the team consultants, which includes Nancy Schreiner, which, as many of you know, was on the city attorney's staff for over 15 years. We have Joe Gibson of Meridian Consultants, an environmental consulting firm, who's also on the Kaneho Recreation and Park District Board of Directors. Our landscape architect, who is not here tonight, is James Dean. I'm sure most of you are familiar with him. He's been around for like 40 years, here for quite a while. Regarding architects, we do have a rendering, I saw it showed earlier, and I think it's down here in front of me. Is it down there? Yeah, okay. As far as architects go, we've interviewed a number of architects, both local and outside of this area, and we haven't selected an architect yet because there's going to be more than an architect, because again, like all of North Ranch and the surrounding community, there are custom homes on custom lots, and so there'll be a number of architects that'll be involved in this project as we go through the construction. On my presentation side, first, I want to thank the city staff for their hard work and diligence and dedication, really, in working with us and designing the project that's now in front of you. And we first, I first contacted the city in 2009, about three years ago, when I was first, this project first came to my office. I've actually looked at this project even years past with other, other people. And our initial meetings with the city were simply to discuss with them what was the city's expectation for this property, how did it fit into the city's general plan, and then getting into that, then what kind of entitlements would be required for the development of this property. And over the past three years, we've worked with the city staff and the surrounding community to make this project consistent with the North Ranch area and the surrounding communities and developments. Now, when KSK first came to my office, they provided a tentative track map, prepared by another firm that's been in this town for quite some time, and it proposed 22 lots without any open space. The 22 lots, by the way, would have been consistent with the zoning of that, what I call the high country area. But what we've done over these past three years, actually, what we did in the very early stages of this, after our initial meetings with the city, is we took the 22 lots and reduced it down to 14, and we took the no open space and took that up to two and a half acres of open space. So we, you know, reduced the things substantially from what the project owners now originally thought that they were purchasing. And we've, and this is important because we were very careful to design this project, this is the engineering side of me talking now. We designed this project to be completely self-contained, in that there's all degrading balances on-site, so we're not importing or exporting any dirt. We're not requesting any waivers from the city. We've been very careful, and the project, the property itself actually lends itself to this, that we don't need to require any kinds of waivers, because the property, unlike a lot of property up in the North Ranch on the high countryside, this property is relatively flat, and so we don't have the steep slopes. There's a few that are over 25, I think there's a couple over 25%, but we're outside of those. It was easy to stay outside of the oak trees, so it was, it was, it was difficult, but not too difficult, to design a project that met the, met the general plan, met the city's vision for this property, and was able to do that consistent with the community surrounding it and not require or request any waivers. And regarding outreach, I'd like to kind of summarize some of our efforts in doing that. Realize this has been over a period of three years, so, you know, after our initial submittal to the city, we worked with the adjacent property owners, one who's here in the audience, Leo Orange, and we, we started out with a, coordinating a community meeting hosted at the North Ranch Community Center, actually, in July of 2010. And we had these same renderings and our tentative map that's up here on the wall, and we walked everybody through the entire project from top to bottom, got the public comments, and we, you know, I'm, my office, again, been in town for 32 years. Here's my phone number, here's my cards. Any comments, questions, whatever, contact me, and I'll make sure I meet with you, because we wanted to do what we could to be consistent and satisfy the surrounding community, because after all, we're the last development coming in, so it's a little more sensitive because we're the last guys. And since then, we've met with the surrounding homeowners association, including the Westlake North Property Owners Association, the Westlake Ranch, Ranch Property Owners Association, and I've either spoke with- And I've either spoke with, or actually met and provided presentation information to Ben Johnson Fairway Homes, Island Forest, Emerald Forest, North Ranch Country Club Estates, Fair Green HOA, and the High Country Association. So we've contacted, met with, and/or provided all of this information, because we have these renderings in smaller packages, and provided everybody everything for quite some time. And we've had a number of follow-up meetings, whether they were requested or where we asked if we could meet with them. Again, we've done that over these past three years. And then, following these community outreach meetings, we met with the city and said, here's all of the comments that we've received from the city. Of course, the city received comments at the same time, not through us. And we brought those comments to the city staff and took them into consideration as far as how the city wanted to see these things incorporated into our project. And just to kind of highlight some of those things, we voluntarily agreed to take the environmental study, which was prepared by the city at the time, which is a mitigated negative deck, MND. And we upgraded, if you will, that to a full environmental impact report, which, you know, was going to take a few months and took, I don't know, quite some time. But we went, very extensively went through that. And again, Joe Gibson's here to, if there's any questions on the environmental side, along with Rick, of course, you know, as far as going through all of that. Of the 14 lots, nine of them are proposed as single-story homes. And actually, that, we would prefer more two stories, but when, again, in our earlier meetings with the city, they go, let's put nine single-story homes up there. We said, okay. And we, and the city, at first, we had some single-story homes along, there are lots, one, two, and three, I think I got those numbers right, one, two, and three border the homes that are on Upper Ranch Road. And what we decided to do is, let's make all of the homes that are on the perimeter of the property that border existing homes, make all those homes single-story homes. So that, again, you know, the privacy, and the thing about privacy is, as much as the existing residents wants privacy, so do these future residents, who are then going to be existing once they move in, they want privacy too. So we kept single-story homes. We tried to jog, if you will, the grading design and the home layout, so they're kind of not sitting right, although they're very big lots, you know, so they don't, they kind of jog each other. And we agreed to, there's two entrances into the property. There's one on Upper Ranch Road, and there's another one on Canaan Road. And from our rendering, you can see on the Upper Ranch Road, and this is the James Dean design, it's kind of got some water feature and some very attractive gated entry. The gated entry, we initially proposed on Canaan, attractive, but a little less attractive than the entry on Upper Ranch Road. Through a lot of discussions, we have agreed to basically make both entries the same, with the idea that if the entry entices people to come in and out, that we would do the best we could to split that traffic, that in-and-out traffic between the two entries. And so, we've made both entries, or both entries will be, we don't have final designs yet, of course, but both entries will be basically identical. We've agreed to provide a landscape buffer between, on the west side of the property against the lots one, two, and three. And actually, the way the site's designed, because of the setbacks of the homes and the pads and the grading, the landscape buffer is kind of a natural thing, because those slopes are going to be landscaped, and again, for privacy purposes. We also, and this is very important, we agreed to complete the site grading and all the infrastructure improvements in one single phase. In other words, we're going to come in at one time, do the grading, put in all the infrastructure, water sewer, storm drains, that sort of thing, build the streets, build the entry gates, and do all of the site landscaping. So all of the entry landscaping, all the slope landscaping will all be done. So what'll happen is, in a single phase, you'll see this rendering, just less the homes. So the only thing that won't be landscaped is the actual pad area where the house is going to be built. Otherwise, it'll be a complete. And we have estimated that to take about six months to do that work. And again, that may seem a little aggressive, but all the grating, everything's on site. We don't have to bring dirt, anything in or out of the property. So we've designed it in such a way that allows for that. And some of the important features of the project, and again, I'm just kind of reiterating some of the things that Pam did, said already, but the property's slightly over 27 acres. Two and a half acres are going to be dedicated as open space. And it's kind of gone back and forth, whether it's going to go COSCA, HOA. We said, we'll do whatever the city ultimately wants us to do, but all development rights are going to be deeded to the city. And in preserving this open space area, there's a trail through there that we're preserving that COSCA wanted us to preserve. Again, whether they actually take control of the property, or HOA does, development rights are deeded to the city. Again, we have 14 residential lots, and they vary from one acre to slightly over one acre to just slightly under four acres. The average is about one and two-thirds acres, which is, by the way, consistent with the lots adjacent to us along Upper Ranch Road. And it's also, for that matter, it's also consistent with the pad areas and most of the lots in the high country area in general. The usable pad area, which is kind of important, and this is something that's kind of unique to this property, the usable pad areas range from .6 to 1.2 acres, with an average of .9. So you have an average of almost one acre of usable pad per lot, which, if you know the North Ranch, and again, I've developed a number of properties up there, you might have pretty big lots, but you have very small, because remember, they have those old development circles on the plans, you have to stay within that development circle, and so the allowable grading, your pad area wasn't nearly as large as these are. So this provides for more usable area and more landscaped area for the owners. And, you know, by comparison, the pad sizes on the Upper Ranch Road range from 1 point, I'm sorry, from .3 to 1.2 acres, with an average of .7. So not to throw out a bunch of numbers, but I mention this to demonstrate that our pads are actually larger than the surrounding properties, and that we're consistent, actually, 1.3 times larger, to throw more numbers out. But we're consistent with the pads on Upper Ranch Road. As far as the homes go, they're going to be, on the average of, they're going to go, range from about 7,000 to 13,000 square feet. And, you know, just to talk about, there are three of the four homes that I personally built in the North Ranch area, when they sold, they sold for the highest dollar per square foot of anything out there at the time. And that's, not because I did, I did a great job, by the way, but not so much that, is that it's the new technology. You build something new, and look at the way technology's changing, and all the new systems they have for homes, and all these new things that, you know, you buy new, and you can turn your home on and off from your car driving there. And so, these homes are equipped with all of that. Again, these renderings are of the, this is just the idea to see what it looks like, so you can kind of see the density and see where the homes are and the amount of landscaping. And KSK, the homeowners, had us do these renderings so that, for the community, and mostly, that they can see this and kind of visualize what this is going to look like. And, you know, so we have very extensive landscaping entries, and I'm out of time. So in closing, I just want to, again, thank the city staff, and for that matter, the owners, to have the patience, you know, going on three years now, to go through this laborious process of getting, I think, a project that is a tremendous asset to the city and community. Thanks.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for the applicant? Ms. Bill DeLaupinia?
Good evening, Mr. Liston. Thank you for your presentation. I was just wondering why the, I'm going back to the EIR and the fact that a lower-density proposal was not examined as part of the EIR because it did not meet the applicant's objectives. Why did it not meet your objective? Is that a question for you, or is that a question for someone else?
I think, I think, one of the owners is here that would probably speak to that better than me.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? No? All right. Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Nancy Schreiner.
Good evening, Mayor Irwin, council members. Nancy Kirsten Schreiner, Nordman, Carmody, Herron, Compton, representing the applicant. I have two attached items to submit to you, and I'll address them in my presentation. And I think I've made about 10 copies each. First, the applicant accepts all of the conditions. The applicant also concurs with the proposed findings. I'd like to try to address Councilmember DeLaupinia's question, in that there are no Class 1 exemptions, excuse me, Class 1 impacts in this particular EIR. Technically, we probably never needed to do an EIR. As a result of having no Class 1 impacts, you don't really need an alternative analysis. The alternative analysis actually becomes moot. However, staff, and I need to tell you, you have always had one of the best staffs. I appear before numerous public entities, and you clearly have excellent staff, and I would certainly rely on your staff and their testimony tonight. The impacts and the reduced density was addressed as one of the alternatives in the reduced site design. That was an elimination of three developable lots. However, as required by CEQA, the project must have objectives, which are stated in the actual EIR, and those are actually developed by both the staff and the applicant's concurrence. And it does not meet the feasibility standards as required under CEQA. And you've got a lengthy letter that I submitted to the Planning Commission dealing with economic feasibility. And in addition, we actually provided you with an additional economic feasibility study, because there were questions by citizens concerning the economics of the project. And that's why the reduction of the additional three-lot alternative does not meet the project objectives, and therefore, would not comply with CEQA. What I'd like to do mostly is address, if I can, I have a number of issues, and we didn't get the letter until 2:30 this afternoon that you received.
Why don't you tell us about your concerns with the issues that were raised?
Okay. Let me do that. First, let me directly take the points, and I'll just take them down, the letter and the Austin Bird letter, if you want. First comment under the executive summary deals with the 42, for expectations of the community. I want to address the fact that this project and this land has been in the city's general plan and sphere of influence for 42 years. It's been in there since 1970. There's been a number of revisions, a number of councils, and it's never changed in 42 years. This land has always been envisioned to be developed and incompatible. When Prudential and American Hawaiian developed the North Ranch area in 1985, the only reason this property wasn't developed is because it was still owned by Mrs. Miller, and she wanted to live on her property. It's not pristine open space. It's been a grazing and cattle ranch for years. It's got developed buildings on it. It's not an undeveloped parcel. It's got barns and accessory buildings. Talk about the benefits. We don't have a statement of overriding consideration, but there's certainly public benefits to this project. There's a 2.5 acres that are being provided as open space, the continuance of a much-needed public trail that COSCA's been trying to build in concurrence with Southern California Edison. There's no tax advantages to the developer in providing those 2.5 acres. It's actually quite a loss. The project certainly provides needed economic jobs in construction. Because of the high-end homes, you've actually got higher-end construction workers dealing with the functions of the home. The fact that it's been in the sphere of influence for 42 years is actually that it's intended to be annexed, always has been part of the plan, part of the full development of this particular city since 1970. Under the county zoning, and I've provided you the non-coastal zoning matrix, all of the items that have an E, either an open triangle or a colored-in triangle, are over-the-counter permits that the county can give. And those particular uses are substantially worse than you would have with a developed residential tract. Those include open storage, winery bottling storage, wholesale nurseries, various animal husbandry, farmworker housing, residential care facilities, public works maintenance facilities, and most importantly, a recycling facilities of hazardous materials is actually an over-the-counter permit in the county. Not to mention that something that would require a CUP or a development permit under the county. So contrary to the letter, where they deal with a lot about what's required under a CUP, there's a lot that's actually exempt under the county. With respect to the issue of balanced grading, Mr. Liston certainly addressed that already. Again, they talk about the benefits. There's no requirement of benefits. You're not adopting a statement of overriding consideration. There's clearly benefits to the city. The property values of these properties are going to be extremely high-end, although you only get a percentage of the property taxes, they're still a larger percentage than you're going to receive. You've also got construction permits, jobs, licenses, as well as any permits and fees that the city would have. With respect to Guidelines for Orderly Development, as we call them "God" in this county, they clearly meet the standards and guidelines for orderly development. This property, again, was intended for annexation. As even stated on page four of the staff report, it meets the orderly development guidelines and was part of intended for annexation. The fact that COSCA may not own the property and is being maintained by the HOA is actually a benefit to COSCA. COSCA doesn't necessarily have liability. COSCA doesn't have maintenance requirements. However, COSCA would probably have access to the trail, as in the conditions, the city's getting all of the development rights on the open space parcel. And there's been a lot of talk about annexation, and as Mr. Burgess explained, I think we all commonly refer to something as an island. However, LAFCO has different definitions than what you and I would think of. We all think of an island as something that's got surrounding development around it, which this property has. LAFCO has specific statutes dealing with islands when they're annexing something called an island in their definitions. However, this property certainly meets all of the annexation requirements. And it talks about, even if we did consider it an island under LAFCO's definition, it's got public utilities, it's got a house. Operational, it's got utilities out to the property. It's got public improvements that run across the property, because it's got public easements running across the property. And it's got physical improvements on the parcels, as you've seen from the area. There's the residential home, as well as building structures. It clearly meets annexation standards. It is something that has been intended for 42 years. I'm actually very shocked that Mr. McGuire attached the litigation with the Park District. Considering Austin Bird actually represented the Park District and lost the case, they were intimately involved in the EIR process and the EIR that was certified, that Judge Reeser overturned. That's not the case here. You've got your expert staff doing this in-house, hiring their own consultants that they deal with to look at an EIR. You've got one of the leading experts in the particular plant that we're dealing with.
Schreiner, we're going to have to wrap it up.
So I would rely on your own staff and not some litigation that obviously had nothing to do with this. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Are there any additional questions? Thank you very much. Mr. Gibson is for questions only. Do we have questions for Mr. Gibson? All right. And then, we have Mark Westonbaum for questions for the property owner. Do we have questions for the property owner? Ms. Bill DeLaupinia, did you have one for the?
I think, I think Mrs. Schreiner answered the question regarding the applicant's objectives. Thank you.
And then, we have Lenny Liston. Are you speaking?
No.
Questions? All right. Then, our next speaker is Marie Orange.
My name is Marie Orange, and I live in the city of Thousand Oaks, and I'm on Upper Ranch Road. Do I have two minutes or three minutes?
It's two minutes.
Two minutes, okay. Good evening, Mayor Irwin and City Council members. I'm here to represent a large number of neighbors and homeowners in the North Ranch community and surrounding areas. After I found out myself about the proposed project on Miller Ranch, I started talking to people that I see pretty much every morning walking my dog in the North Ranch Park. I asked them if they knew about the proposed project, and nobody seemed to know about it. Everyone knew, of course, of the beautiful Miller Ranch, and were shocked to hear that it might get developed with 14 homes. And everyone seemed to be aware that this property is designated open space. Many of the neighbors did what we did before we bought. Many of the neighbors did what we did before we bought our lot back in 1990. We asked the city about the property directly behind our lot and were shown maps of this property being designated open space. Naturally, we loved the idea and proceeded to purchase our lot and build our home. After hearing how many neighbors in the North Ranch community was against this project, a neighbor and I decided to go door-to-door and let people know about this. The responses were anonymous. Everyone thought that the Miller Ranch should remain as currently zoned, one home to 20 acres with designated open space. Many neighbors wanted to attend this meeting tonight, but with work and kids' activities, 6 o'clock is very difficult for people to make, and they truly hope that you will consider their signed petitions as their voice here tonight. Walking door-to-door, everyone's big concern was the Upper Ranch Road and Canaan intersection, where everyone feels it's a very dangerous intersection as it is. Coming from the North Ranch Park and trying to go left on Canaan Boulevard towards Westlake is extremely dangerous and would get worse, even worse with 14 homes used in this area. Together with my neighbor, Mrs. Wagner, we had collected a total of 190 signatures, and in addition, about 15 people have sent in letters to the City Council. So we ask that you please listen to the many residents in the North Ranch community who oppose this project and deny the annexation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Orange. And our next speaker is the attorney representing the residents, Mr. Neil McGuire of Moore Park. If you could please introduce yourself and to your city of residence. Thank you. Followed by Mr. McGuire will be Leo Orange.
Good evening, Mayor Irvin and members of the council. I'm Neil McGuire of Alston Bird here in the city, and while I'm a product of Thousand Oaks, I'm a current resident of Moore Park. Before I begin, I'd be wondering if I'm going to be extended the same courtesy as the attorney for the applicant in order to address some of those comments.
You will, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you first for considering our letter. Obviously, there was a lot of detail in there, but thank you for considering the points that, first of all, this is a discretionary decision. You have a resolution before you in attachment number nine that is a resolution asking the City Council to initiate the annexation process with LAFCO. And that is a discretionary decision, and the City Council can simply say, "We decline to approve that resolution," and, you know, the City Council has all the discretion in the world in order to do so. Thank you as well for recognizing the issue with staff that this is not an island annexation. Within state law and LAFCO policy, certain islands are sort of encouraged to be development. The Montago neighborhood in Ventura is an example where you have urban services, urban development, and it's an inefficient system there. That obviously isn't the case here. We have an open space property. We do not have an urbanized neighborhood, and as staff noted, this is not an island annexation. So getting into that, I'd like to get into some of the CEQA issues and some of the comments raised by council for the applicant. First of all, with regard to the seed bank issue and the milkvech, first of all, yes, my firm did represent the Park District in the case, so we are very aware of the issues. It was not me, it was not even our Westlake Village office or Thousand Oaks office, but there is an enormous amount of overlap here between the two cases. Here on both sites, we have a federally endangered species. We also have a public agency in charge of biological resources saying that there is a seed bank on the site. Here, it's the Department of Fish and Game, and that was noted at the Planning Commission hearing that they called in and said, "We believe there's a seed bank." In the Park District case, it was the Fish and Wild Service, the Wild Eye Service, the federal agency. And in both cases, in the Park District, the issue was that the court found inadequate, was there was not a permanent avoidance of the plant, and we have the same issue here. There's going to be a temporary avoidance here for two years during construction, and then after that, fair game. And that is not adequate mitigation under CEQA. So there is a CEQA impact here. It hasn't been addressed. Fish and Game has notified the city that there is an issue, and we'd like to see it addressed, obviously. And because there is an impact, it does trigger an alternatives analysis that would require the city to look at an alternative to avoid that impact. But I also want to point out something else the council for the applicant said. She made the comment that the alternatives analysis is really moot. That's not true. CEQA case law very clearly says, and the case came out of Northern California, one of the Laurel Heights cases, that even if you didn't have any impact, you still have to do an alternatives analysis. You held to the same standard as you would be. And again, we do have impacts here. They do need to be addressed by alternatives, but even in the absence of that, the alternatives analysis must be done. Going into some of the county zoning issues here, we heard that there are a litany of things that would be much worse than residential development. Not so. The county recently updated its noncoastal zoning ordinance to preclude any assembly uses, and there are very limited exceptions to that, recreational fields. I noted in the letter, the only thing that would be entitled here by right is a park without lights. Assembly uses like a winery, a recycling facility where people come to the site, precluded. It can't happen. So there shouldn't be a concern that there's going to be a huge intense development on this site if it stays under the county's existing open space zoning. So I think I'll conclude my comments there by saying, you know, thank you for your consideration of our letter. Thank you for the points in there. We ask that you decline to adopt the resolution initiating the annexation and the prezone. This project has environmental impacts, there's community opposition to it, and there really is no public benefit to this project. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. McGuire. You did take only half of your colleague here in terms of speaking time. Next is Leo Orange, followed by Trudy Fauteslow, and after Mrs. Low will be Rick Chivaroli, or Chivaroli, I'm not sure.
Good evening, council members. You know, tonight you really make a big difference. Thirty-two people showed up, five children, they probably should be in bed right now, are here. And when I looked at the slides here, I thought to myself, usually there's a before and after, and the before, usually the after looks better. I don't know, I started to get a little teary-eyed because I know how beautiful it is back there, and the after reminded me of Canaan Road and everything that we have behind the gates, and it just was an open space. And I can tell you that, you know, tonight you really make a difference in a lot of people's lives. Two hundred that signed petitions and the people that came here tonight. My wife told you that in 1990, we drove up the road and we saw this dirt, and I sat there and I went to City Hall and I asked, and they said it was open space. I went to the county and they told me it was open space, one house per 20. I went to Mr. and Mrs. Miller, and she told me, and he told me, it was open space. Every day that we were building our home, he would come down and take a peek at what we were doing, and he said, "You're going to be lucky. Look at Taco Bell, the horses, look what we have here." And when I sat there and talked with Mrs. Miller, my wife was her life alert for two and a half years when she would slip or fall at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning. We'd get the phone call, go up there and make sure she was safe. I always asked her, I'd started showing up two, three times a week to see how she was, to see if she needed coffee, milk, if she needed something that I'd go to the store with. And I'd say, "What would you want to do with this property someday?" And she'd point across the way and say, "See the post home? I'd love to see a home like that with my horses and my animals." You know, and the city told me that there was only going to be one thing that was going to be built in our neighborhood, a fire station, they said. During the recession then, they said, "You know, the fire station will come when the city's got money, but it's going to be down the road, way down the road." So we moved to TO in the Canaho Valley for a couple of reasons. One, quality of life, good schools, great people, you know, safe streets, a country-style bedroom community. And when we elect you, our officials, we looked, we looked to you to protect our interests. We looked to you to protect our community. You know, I'm a capitalist. I believe that a person has a right to make as much money as they want, that they have a right to do what they want to do on their property, but we must follow the rules. We have to follow rules. And KSK Investments, for them to assume that they could annex, prezone, develop for profit while disturbing the quality of life that we will be for the next 10 years, eight to 10 years, hearing hammers and nails right now, we have a 32,000 square...
Mr. Orange, your time is up. You're 45 seconds past your time.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much.
But I will ask if there are council members who have questions. Are there any questions of Mr. Orange? Because I do have questions. Mr. Orange, since you seem to be the leader, so to speak, of the residents, I was just wondering, and much mention has been made in letters to the council members, emails from the council members and so forth, that you all thought that it was open space. Granted, it is zoned open space under the county, but did you check the city zoning for that?
Yes, I did. I did. And I was informed at the time that it was open space.
Okay, did you look at the actual papers, though, the actual documents, rather than rely on words?
No. What I did was when I came in and we decided to buy the property, I checked and got a topography of what was going to be there, and it showed. Then, it did show that there was going to be a fire station, and when I saw the big lot behind me, I went into the city and asked, and when I was told by one of the people at the desk there at the clerk's office down there, that it was open space.
Okay, all right. My other question was, originally, I think Mr. Liston mentioned 22 homes were proposed for that particular property. Now it's down to 14 homes, and he's tried to reach out to the residents, to the community. Why is it that you could not reach an agreement, or why is it that a reduction in homes is still not, can still not be tolerated, in your opinion?
Well, at one time, we did have two meetings, and our attorney and a lot of the residents brought the question up. You know, we were asked by a few people to look into it that way, to see if we could come to a compromise, and at all phases, they said, "No, this is it. This is what we're going to do." And we just took it, it's the bottom line. It's all about profit. If they have 14 homes, this is where they make their profit. I was wondering how you could buy a piece of 29 acres for 4.4 million, 150,000 per acre? And so I start thinking about, you know, maybe, and even at one time, we tried to ask if we could buy the lot. Erw Wagner had a group of people and wanted to know if I could come in, and I asked Mrs. Miller through, if you could, and the person that was taking care of the home at the time with Mrs. Miller, when the nieces come in, could you see if we could discuss with them, maybe possibly buying the lot? And that was, you know, that was when Mrs. Miller, she lived in there two years before she died, so that's quite a ways back. But, you know, I think that's something my attorney, our attorney could discuss better with you, but we tried, and they said, "No." The bottom line was 14 homes, and it was basically their way, you know?
What was your bottom line?
Well, now that we've gone through it now, and we've sat as a group, we want to stay with what it's zoned for. And it's zoned for one home for 20. I'd love to see another 30,000 square foot home like the one...
Under the county zoning?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, well, thank you very much. Are there any other questions? All right, thank you very much, Mr. Orange.
Thank you very much.
We now have Trudy Low, followed by Rick Chivaroli and Marshall Gates.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council. My name is Trudy Low, and I live on Upper Ranch Road in the North Ranch section of Thousand Oaks. My husband and I purchased our lot on Upper Ranch Road in the 80s, about the same time I also had opportunity to serve on the staff of the City Council of Thousand Oaks. At the time we purchased that lot, and we were the first people to purchase in the 17 lots that face Miller Ranch, I did look at the plans. It was zoned open space, and I do understand the difference between something being zoned open space in the county and something being zoned open space in the city, but there was no requirement that it be annexed in, and it was not at that time part of the city, and it was zoned open space. We relied on that zoning, just as I'm sure many of the other people who followed us in purchasing the lots there relied on that. It's stunning to me that the real estate developer applicants who are now requesting this prezoning and massive upzoning of this property, in some way think that they're entitled to maximize their profits on this piece of property, when we were all required to live by the zoning that was attached to the property when we purchased our properties to build our family homes in this area. And there's nothing to be gained by this from the community or from the neighborhood, and it would inflict prolonged health and quality of life damage in this neighborhood. I have to take issue with the attorney for the applicant in characterizing this as a wonderful benefit to the neighborhood. I think we, as residents, longtime residents of this neighborhood, can evaluate what is and is not a benefit to this neighborhood. And we would ask that the council uphold the longstanding tradition of Thousand Oaks to respect the zoning laws and the open space, and that you deny this application. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about our particular experience.
Are there any questions of Mrs. Low? No. Thank you very much. Next speaker is Rick Chivaroli, followed by Marshall Gates.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and honorable councilman. My name is Rick Chivaroli. I've lived in Ventura County for 27 years and have had the pleasure of living on Upper Ranch Road for over 13 years. At the Planning Commission hearing, the developer's attorney stated that we should welcome the development of the Miller Ranch because it will increase the value of our property that is adjacent to the ranch, and because development under the existing county zoning could be worse for us. But with regard to the property values, and as someone whose house backs up to the Miller Ranch property, I can tell you that, and as we all know from a business perspective, this is total speculation of what the values are going to be or could be. Mr. Liston himself even stated that we don't even have architects picked yet, and as we well know, homes of this size, they don't readily sell. I mean, it takes a while to sell a house that's going to range from 7,000 to 13,000 or 10,000 square feet, as far as that would be. What attracted me to this area and was the final, really, the final decision-making process, well, in the final decision-making process, was this open space. I too did check at both the city level and at the county level, and was, this was going to be my Xanadu, the place where I was going to spend the rest of my life, as far as that would be. I opened up to open space in the back. Still to this day, we have the deer come through and everything else. And for 42 years, this has been open space. I do not believe the original developers, if they ever wanted to develop that property, would have had one gate going into it and no dual access cut through on Canaan Road. That is contrary to the whole design of the whole Upper Ranch, of the whole project within North Ranch and in that area, as far as that would be.
Thank you, Mr. Chivaroli. Thank you very much for your comments.
Okay, I appreciate it. I just, one thing I'd like to say is there is no public benefit to the development of this property.
Okay. Mayor Irwin is back. Mayor Irwin is back, and the next speaker would be Marshall Gates.
Evening. My name's Marshall Gates, and I'm a 15-year resident of North Ranch, and I'm speaking in opposition of the annexation. The key issue, the open, is the zoning, the open space, one residence per 20 acres, was known to all Upper Ranch residents, including the developer, when we bought our properties. The newest owners on the block, KSK Investments, are not entitled and should not be allowed to secure profit at the expense of neighbors who purchased homes with the reasonable assumption that land designated as open space, one residence per 20 acres, would never be bulldozed and subdivided. The North Ranch community does not need another 14 luxury homes. Local residents do not need to endure the grading and paving of the last open space corridor along the north side of the North Ranch community. The proposal before the City Council appears to have one beneficiary, KSK Investors Limited Partnership. KSK speculated that the city of Thousand Oaks would cooperate in annexing and simultaneously rezoning, thereby enabling their subdivision of a 27-acre open space parcel that they purchased at a very attractive price. When KSK first petitioned the city in June of 2010, they did not anticipate the overwhelming opposition they have received from our community. Our community is speaking out to say that one developer's speculation should not be rewarded at the expense of many longtime local residents. North Ranch residents expect existing open space zones... North Ranch residents expect existing open space zoning to be preserved and honored by Ventura County and Thousand Oaks city leaders. We ask for your no vote on the annexation and rezoning of the property.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gates. Our next speaker is Anna Sutton. Anna will be followed by Pete Sutton. Good evening, Ms. Sutton.
Good evening. My name is Anna Sutton and I reside in 2155 Upper Ranch Road. I moved to Thousand Oaks in 1977 with my husband, a daughter at that time aged five, and our baby son, six months old. Over the years, we moved to several different homes, always within the neighborhoods of this great community. The North Ranch area and Upper Ranch Road in particular were always our desire ultimate goal. Approximately 10 years ago, we purchased a home on Upper Ranch and after 17 months of extensive renovations, we moved in. We too did our homework, confirming prior to purchase that the property known as Miller Ranch, directly across from our home, was zoned open space and not to be subdivided any further. Although there has been prior development in this area, including the development of Upper Ranch Road, I submit that the building of our homes contributed to the construction of the fire station number 37 that serves the North Ranch community. The project proposed does not provide any comparable benefit to the city or to the community. I respectfully request that the City Council deny the proposed annexation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sutton. Pete Sutton and Mr. Sutton will be followed by Mr. Kidway.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. For the sake of time, I won't repeat some things my wife just said, but just to summarize in one respect, that we've been here 35 years. We've been members of the community for 35 years, raised our children here. We have grandchildren who are in the audience to see how democracy works. Part of the allure of the, the home we bought in North Ranch was that it was across the street from the Miller Ranch. And we did our research, as my wife said, to determine it was zoned open space, one home. We also knew that it was zoned to accommodate animals, horses, cows, whatever. And we were supportive of that because we felt it would maintain the pastoral nature of the area and keep alive a part of the history of Thousand Oaks. This project would forever change all that and create long-lasting negatives for the quality of life for those of us who live here. The developer estimates himself, his numbers, eight to 10 years construction build-out for this project. He talks about the six months of grading. We're talking eight to 10 years. And as you know, sometimes construction estimates are on the low side. So think about it, 10 years of dust pollution, noise pollution, increased traffic of trucks, cars, large earth-moving equipment. For example, the amount of grading that will be considerable. The EIR itself says 72,000 cubic yards are going to be graded. They're basically going to scalp the hill there. They, they, they say there's basically just flat land there, but that's, that's not the case. You can go out there and see it for yourself. Imagine, if you will, the equivalent of 3,000, think of this, 3,600 truck trips of dirt equivalent by moving it around that property to infill. So it's going to dramatically reconfigure that whole property. The enormous amount of grading will significantly impact the hillside and the property's existing habitat for sensitive species. These are just some of the intolerable negative impacts of this project to those of us who have called Thousand Oaks our home for over three decades. And there is no benefit for the city and its citizens. So we therefore, and I ask that the City Council deny this project. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Sutton. Mr. Kidway and Mr. Kidway will be followed by Valerie Darboz.
Nick Kidway, resident of Nevada Department of State, citizen of Thousand Oaks. Honorable Mayor, Council. The issue here is a macro issue and all the talk has been about the details, but they don't come until UNX. And this is R1 and the change is for 14 homes. And the issue here is whether the council will side with a real estate speculator or with the residents that pay the taxes and vote you in the office. For the record, I did speak in favor, the planning commission for the developer. I think I scanned the, the report and I was kind of misled and, you know, people are allowed to change. And after reading the report and talking to some of the residents, this is a clear example where they were led into believing something and it is basically the developer trying to grab the property real cheap and make, turning it into vulture capitalist profit. If TOTV can show the graph, it's very well done, as you can see, Gates is laughing about it. The purchase was for 4.4 million. It will gross about 22 million and there's a margin of 17.6. So I don't know the cost, but you can see that. And I asked these four questions and the staff had them in the afternoon. I would like an answer. Why did the staff, why did the owner not change the zoning early on so that we would not come into this? I mean, the owner is sophisticated. They sold Westlake and all that. And this should be a warning to the other people is that they can get the zoning done, then the people know about it and then they can take their time to build it. I know the red light is on, but I would like to say that the hearing is unfair because you gave eight minutes to Mr. Schreiner. The staff report is basically for the, for the applicant and then you have cards of, of people that is diluting the time and you should at least give three minutes.
Mr. Kidway, what were the other two questions that you wanted to ask of staff?
What did you say?
What were the other two questions you wanted to ask staff?
Well, why was this not brought up in October? Is this playing politics and not brought up in, in January? And I did ask the other questions, so I appreciate you letting me speak.
All right. We'll have staff answer it at the end. Our next speaker is Valerie. Maybe you can pronounce your last name so I don't mangle it again. And she will be followed by Jane Wooster.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Valerie Darboz. It's a very difficult name to pronounce. And also resident of North Ranch for 16 years now. In addition to all the environmental impacts, I wanted to raise four areas of concerns that some of, of our previous speakers have brought up to your attention, but I'd like to emphasize those, which is the proposed density of this project. Although no one can ever expect no development on a vacant property nearby, at least the, the residents have done their due diligence. And I did so 16 years ago to March Down City Hall and said, I want a copy of the general plan. And, and at the time, you couldn't buy a general plan, actually. You had to look at it at the counter and walk away with, you know, little scribbles and notes. And so I did some more research recently as well and, and discovered that not only just the, the county zoning was obviously a lower density than it is proposed today, but I also found a map that referred to a, a density of one unit per five acres, which I, I thought was more in keeping with the neighborhood. From one unit for 20 acres down to one unit for five acres, I thought was reasonable. And over the years, we haven't seen much development in North Ranch, other than custom homes, basically. And that's what I've seen. So what I would consider this development after the fact, I wouldn't call it an infill development since it's open space and surrounded by open space as well. I would call it an after-the-fact project. I think it should keep within a lower density, but not exceed the current density. And a second issue that I wanted to also emphasize was, I'm, although it's, I'm, I'm fully in support of annexation. I, I think cities should not leave it to the, the property owners or a developer to pre-zone a property, but the city should take the initiative to actually annex land and zone it accordingly. So you've got support and you don't get up, get into the situation as you are today. And though, and the third point was, 14 units are going to cause an enormous amount of grading quantities, work both in cut and fill, which inevitably will impact the privacy of the neighbors. The way the, the pads are, are designed will end up looking like the development on the other side of the hill facing Lang Ranch, which doesn't look like part of a development that should belong on that side of, of Canaan and Westlake Boulevard.
You're going to have to wrap it up, please.
All right. And my last, my fourth point was also the access onto Canaan. It's, it is, as Mrs. Orange mentioned earlier, it is very difficult to get on Canaan, both from the north side and the south side. Adding 14 units onto near that intersection is going to be an issue. So in conclusion, I'd like, I would ask the council to take into consideration this project and the density specifically, and, and request the applicant to reduce their proposed density.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jane Wooster, followed by Kathy Schutz.
Good evening. My name is Jane Russell Wooster. I live near San Lucas, California. In 1966, with the development of Westlake, when the development of Westlake began in earnest, my aunt Patricia Miller had to leave her home on the Caneo Ranch where she was born and where our family had lived since 1880. And she moved to this 27 acres that was three and a half miles up Simi Road, now Westlake Boulevard. The property was remote and well out of the sphere of influence of any development, but development caught up with her. When she moved there, the property was remote. But in 1972, American Hawaiian requested that North Ranch be annexed into the city of Thousand Oaks. And by 1985, the development at Buffer Ranch began in earnest with the approval of tracks of ground that developed ground to the south side of Canaan Road, to the north side of Canaan Road and to the west side of Westlake Boulevard at Canaan Road. In December 1986, my aunt's driveway access had to be moved. Because of the development of track 4023 between her house and Westlake Boulevard, the new common area owned by the Westlake North Homeowners Association blocked her access. This group includes the homeowners on the cul-de-sac at Upper Ranch Road who are now protesting the development of this property. By 1989, the city of Thousand Oaks punched through Westlake Boulevard and eventually houses were built right up to my aunt's property line, including the firehouse and one more house after that. During this time, various representatives at Prudential Insurance Company came to my aunt and offered to buy her property. They said, you go pick anything you want and we'll buy it and then we'll trade. But she wanted to live there for the rest of her life. And in February 25th, 1992, in a letter to Maria Vanderkolt, who was the supervisor of Ventura County, she said, "We have always assumed that eventually our property will be annexed to the city of Thousand Oaks, but have hoped that this would not take place until after our deaths." I know my aunt assumed that this property would always be developed. I was not only her niece, I was her confident, I was her certified public accountant. I would like to end my comments by expressing my opinion about this property. The surrounding area is now fully developed and there is no better productive use for 2000 Upper Ranch Road than development. And I would have to say, if development on this property is denied, one would certainly question why the surrounding area was suitable for development, but this acreage was not. I'd like to, thank you. It's a pleasure to be in Thousand Oaks. And I would just like to say, do you have any idea how much dirt I've seen moved in Westlake since 1947? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wooster. Kathy Schutz and Kathy will be followed by Keith Myers.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I just wanted to come down this evening to express my concern regarding the annexation and the rezoning of the Miller Ranch property. And you've heard from all the folks who live over there. These are my neighbors. They're in the same homeowners association than I am and they've told you about their relying on the fact that this was county-owned property, one home per 20 acres. I don't believe that this annexation and rezoning will be of any direct benefit to the city of Thousand Oaks, but I know it's going to be just extremely disruptive to these folks with the extensive grading for pads, utilities, underground utilities, et cetera, to say nothing about the 14 homes that are going to be built over a period of who knows how many years. So I think it's really important to consider what these longtime residents of the area think and their reliance on this parcel being open space with one home per 20 acres. So I ask that you not approve this annexation or the development on this property. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Schutz. Keith Myers. And then our last speaker will be Ann Myrie.
Mayor, City Council, thank you for letting me talk. I'm Keith Myers. I am a real estate broker, co-owner of Remax Olson and Associates with an office in Thousand Oaks and Westlake Village and surrounding areas as well. I'm coming, I understand the frustration of some of the people here and I, I understand that change is difficult. I also understand that our, we have a duty as communities to provide housing for our growing communities within the constraints, proper constraints that all the government agencies do provide. And it has been mentioned that, you know, these houses don't sell quickly. Well, maybe they don't, but we do have demand for, for quality houses. And I think that this would supplement, augment and be a benefit to the greater community. It would add vibrancy, economic growth and, and add addition to the tax base and would be a compliment. And 14 homes would be reasonably absorbed and based on my, my, you know, investigation of this property, I think it would be for the benefit of the overall good for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker, Ann.
Thank you very much. I'm Ann Russell Myrie. I would say that, as you all know, we have deep roots here. I and my sisters and my cousins spent about four weeks a year here in Ventura County since our birth, every single year, until my aunt died at Thanksgiving last 10 years ago. I find, I didn't make prepared remarks, but I'm a little confused by the adjacent homeowners. I think they've lost sight of something. Mr. Orange suggested that he had offered to buy a lot of my aunt's property. Now, that would not be possible to do if that property were not subdivided. A lot of people made offers on my aunt's property and she always told them, she, first of all, she told us who those people were. And secondly, she told those people, you need to speak to my nieces after I'm gone. Well, some of these people that are complaining did not come and offer to buy a lot or the property. And they did not offer to buy it to develop it. They just want to keep it as open space. Now just think of me. When I go down Thousand Oaks Boulevard, I look for Goble's Animal Farm and I look for Lubach's Pharmacy and I look for the Old Market and the Redwood Inn. And that's pretty much what was on Thousand Oaks Boulevard when I was a child. And that's pretty much what isn't there anymore. I mean, I, my father reached the point where he wouldn't come to Thousand Oaks because it didn't look like the pictures in the maps that you print. But I think some people are being unrealistic about what is the best use for this property. So thank you for allowing me to just take a little sentimental journey.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Staff responses to the public and then questions of staff. I guess one of the questions that Mr. Kidway asked is why was the zoning not changed early on? Maybe we can start with that.
Well, yeah, that's a simple one. The city doesn't have any jurisdiction over the zoning until an application is filed and annexation is requested, which didn't happen until two years ago. The city, however, the property is and always has been within the city's planning area as defined by our general plan. So in 1970, when the city adopted its general plan, we did adopt general plan designations throughout the planning area, including this property. And as we pointed out in the staff report, that general plan designation is low, very low-density residential, which is defined as zero to two units per dwelling unit, per net acre, I'm sorry. So at such time as somebody requested annexation and prezoning, which is identical to a zone change, except it's for property that hasn't been annexed yet, that would be the guidance that we would use, our general plan designation for the appropriate zoning of the property. And I think if there was another question you wanted me to answer, and otherwise, we do have some responses.
No, there was, no. That's fine.
Mr. Burgess has some comments on the environmental.
Thank you. I'd just like to briefly comment on some of the remarks Mr. Maguire made in terms of the rare and endangered plant. We did talk to Fish and Game and Fish and Wildlife about the plant on the site, and Fish and Wildlife cannot comment because there's no federal nexus, so they didn't provide comments. Fish and Game was concerned that they felt there was a seed bank on the property, but we begged them to respond to the project, and they didn't. They didn't provide a letter, so we couldn't respond to their issues in that regard. I think it's important to realize what the plant needs for survival, and it's all very fine to say, "Well, let's preserve the plant on the site." However, this plant requires wildfire burning through the area to cause it to germinate. And we've got some residential housing in the area. I think wildfire is something we probably wouldn't want to encourage out there. The plant would do fine if we did, but it isn't really a suitable site. In addition, the soil that the plant is growing on is not, generally, it grows in thin-soiled areas. The soil there is rather deep, and it's not a good habitat for the plant. If you look at the area in the Lang Ranch dam area where the plant was found, that was referenced, it's no longer existing there because it is not a suitable habitat for that plant. So that's all I wanted to say about that.
Ms. Alpert.
Just one other comment I wanted to also. I think Mr. Maguire indicated that the decision to decline to initiate annexation proceedings is a discretionary decision. That decision has already been made. Back in 2010, the City Council adopted a resolution initiating annexation proceedings. So that decision has already been made. The other decisions are before you tonight.
I think we had some other questions.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Larry Tay, Public Works Traffic Division, just wanted to address some of the traffic-related concerns that a few of the residents brought up. Just wanted to put the size of this project in perspective, not from an acreage standpoint, not from a dwelling unit standpoint, but a traffic generation standpoint. This project of 14 units is expected to generate about 140 trips per day. Half of those trips will be exiting the site, half of those trips are expected to enter the site. And those trips will be, you know, will take place over the course of a 24-hour period, have various origins and destinations. So the actual impacts to any given location at any given time is actually insignificant. In the case of Upper Ranch Road, which, the intersection of Upper Ranch Road and Canaan Road, which is very close to the project site and therefore expected to experience a larger percentage of, a larger volume of project traffic than any of the other city's roadways and streets, we're looking at 14 trips in the peak period of the 140 trips. 14 are going to be made during the peak period. That's the busiest hour of the day. That's going to be distributed amongst two access points, the access point on Canaan and the access point on Upper Ranch Road. And so some are going to, some of these vehicles will be making right turns in, right turns out, left turns in, generally movements that have very little conflict. The most difficult, potentially most difficult movement to make is the left turn out. And of those 14 vehicles in the peak hour, three are expected to be making that left turn out in the morning, one or two in the evening. That's, to put that in perspective, that's one every 20 minutes in the morning, and in the evening, one every 20 or 30 minutes. So that's not a huge amount of traffic, especially in light of the fact that Canaan Road has additional capacity above and beyond what it's carrying right now. 10,000 vehicles per day currently travel on Canaan Road. It's a four-lane facility. Generally, four-lane facilities can potentially carry up to 20, sometimes 30,000 vehicles per day without much difficulty. So we're way below capacity, and that enables Canaan to accommodate the additional project trips. One last thing is that a review of the accident history indicates that there have been no reported accidents at the intersection of Canaan and Upper Ranch Roads over the last five years. So we've got minimal project traffic, additional capacity that's available, and a very clean accident history in the area.
Any more staff comments?
Yeah, I'd just like to provide a little bit of context regarding the guidelines for orderly development and the existing county zoning on the property. And I think we provided a copy of the guidelines in the staff report, or attached to the staff report, and also discussed them in the report. But the basic philosophy and agreement that was made among all the cities and the county itself in Lafco, and is reflected in resolutions we've each adopted and in the county general plan, is that if land is within a city's sphere of influence as defined by Lafco, whether it's inside that city or not, the city, that particular city rather than the county, is going to be the lead agent for any land use planning of the property. And the county has agreed to step back and not deal with development proposals on those properties, and rather refer applicants to the city. And this is embodied in the county general plan, and specifically its open space designation. We're all used to thinking of open space in the terms that, we use that here in the city. And in the city, land is designated and zoned open space only if it has been either acquired by a public agency for permanent natural open space protection, or through a tract map or some other means deed restricted whereby it doesn't have any development rights at all. So it's pure open space. The county open space zone is somewhat of a catch-all, if you will. I think Mr. Maguire addressed some of the recent changes the county has made regarding assembly uses, but there are still many other land uses, including residential use, that are allowed in the county open space zone. But the foundation for the county open space zone is the county's general plan, and it specifically talks about the open space designation in the county general plan. It's not the city general plan, it's the county plan. And it says, I'm reading from the county general plan now, "The urban reserve overlay designation is applied to all unincorporated land within a city's adopted sphere of influence. Although Lafco has determined these areas to be appropriate for provincial annexation and urbanization, the urban designation in the county's general plan was not applied to all lands within the Lafco sphere boundaries because it could result in urban development being permitted without annexation." And that would be contrary to the guidelines, which place the responsibility for delivering urban services and regulating development with cities rather than the county. So the county is seeing hands-off. Accordingly, unincorporated lands within spheres have been designated under this general plan, the county general plan, as existing community rural agricultural or open space. Under these designations, therefore, more intense development could not occur on affected lands until they are annexed. So the county has basically put a very restrictive zoning on these properties, a very restrictive general plan designation to discourage potential developers from talking to the county about developing them. The counties, the county and the cities have agreed, we're not going to have annexation battles, we're not going to fight for development, all the development's going to go in the city, and it's the job of the cities themselves to regulate that development. So what we have before us tonight is, this property should be annexed to the city, is completely surrounded by the city, the access is through the city, the utilities are through the city, and it's the job of the city to regulate that development. And through this prezoning application and the proposed tract map, we're making that decision this evening. What kind of development would we like to see on the property?
Any other comments by staff? Questions for staff? Ms. Bill DeLaPina.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted some clarification on initiating the annexation, which the council approved two years ago along with the application for concurrent processing. But annexation is not complete until the council actually approves the EIR and approves everything else tonight, and then we still have to file. So simply because we initiated it doesn't mean that we're actually following through with it. Just wanted to clarify that. Thanks.
Any other questions for staff? Mr. Fox?
Just, Mr. Prescott, let me just get a little bit better understanding, and I recognize, I've heard this a number of times over the years. As I understand, as you say, the lead agency, would it be fair to say that, as such, the city has, in a sense, the first right of refusal on development of a property?
Well, I think the underlying question there is if the city decides it doesn't want to prezone the property and doesn't want to annex the property, then what happens? And you might ask the developer or the property owner, but I think they would possibly approach the county about that and tell the county that the city has no interest in annexing it, won't prezone it. We understand that you have a restrictive zoning on it because it was an urban reserve, and the city's not interested in regulating that, and we'd like to file an application with the county.
Okay, very good.
And it's kind of uncharted territory.
Right.
Because there's, you know, the guidelines require annexation, some of the city policies, for example, hooking up the sewer system, et cetera. So, you know, the system was set up for a certain purpose, and that would, would somewhat be contrary to that purpose, I think.
Right. Okay, thanks.
Anything else? All right, then, the applicant has five minutes of rebuttal time.
Leonard, again, thank you. Two quick questions, or one. Can I defer, I had just one thing to talk about, and then I defer the rebuttal to Nancy because there's a number of things I think she's better equipped to respond to.
You have five minutes total.
Okay. Then, just on these petitions and the number of people that have wrote letters in, we've actually plotted all of those out and counted them, and there's actually a total of 35 households in the North Ranch, in the entire North Ranch area that have filed these letters. Everything else is outside the North Ranch areas, and there's, the reason it sounds like more is because you have one household doing two or three letters. And we have a little map I can provide and accounting of that. And the other question, other comment I had just real quick is, there was talk about maximizing profit. Certainly, a developer wants to make a profit, but if it was maximizing, they would have stuck with the 22 lots that they started out with, which is within the zoning range that's in the city's general plan. But for a variety of different reasons, we reduced that 22 to 14. So certainly, they have to make a profit, but there is a point where they can't move forward with the project, and that's where the 14 homes are.
Thank you.
Good evening. Nancy Schreiner-Nordman-Carmody here in Compton. You heard from both Ms. Russell and Ms. Wooster this evening. Also, during the Planning Commission, Planning Commissioner Chair Darrell Reynolds knew Mrs. Miller very well and made a number of background information. And I've provided you with her testimony from the Planning Commission tape that Mrs. Miller wanted this property developed after her death, and that she intended it that way. And again, as I said it earlier, the only reason it hasn't been developed was because Mrs. Miller wanted to live there, not somebody else. I'd like to do is address some of the statements. I think your staff has responded impeccably, as usual, to the comments made this evening. But it's very important to note that Department of Fish and Game has not provided any comments to the EIR whatsoever. They obviously have not considered this project of importance to them. We are avoiding the one plant that's been found, and as Mr. Burgess has testified, there is not probably a seed bank in this particular area. There's not soil capable of having that seed bank. And we're clearly avoiding this area. There's no development in this area whatsoever under the project. As Mr. Liston mentioned, they would be building this project to full density. We'd be looking at 22 homes. But they've worked with staff and the neighbors and the surrounding area to develop a project that is thoroughly compatible with the neighborhood. There was testimony with respect to it's going to take 10 years. Remember, they're selling vacant lots, not developable homes at this point in time. Those lots will probably be sold very, very quickly, and as people design their homes, they will be built, especially in this particular market. Surprisingly, the higher-end market is actually much more active than your middle-income markets. There was a lot of testimony about that people went to the county and checked the open space zoning, which we agree it's always been county zoning. However, there's been testimony this evening, which is a little bit different than the testimony at the Planning Commission, but that they did come to city staff and ask about the zoning. I very much doubt that your staff would have told somebody incorrect information. They would have told them what the zoning was for the properties that were within the city and what was reflected as zoning in the county. You know, we've had staff that's been here for a long, long period of time that would have given them accurate information. The project that's actually being proposed is significantly less dense than what's shown in the city's general plan. As you heard Mr. Liston speak, the lots are over one acre when you could have zero to two dwelling units to the acre under the land use designation. Development of this property, in my mind, was set in motion in 1970 when land use designation was provided in the city's general plan for this property. And it's continued that way through prior councils, and it has never, ever been changed in 42 years. This project is not anything different than what the city has envisioned all these years. Two years ago, council initiated the annexation of this property because you want to see a full project. You want to see what's coming forward with your EIR and your development project, your RPD and your tract. That's the best way to look at it. You have a full picture of what you're going to be looking at with respect to an annexation and the prezoning. It's not really if, but what, and you've got that before you. You've got 14 homes with 2.5 acres of open space being provided to you.
Ms. Schreiner, you're going to have to wrap it up.
As I mentioned earlier, your staff would not bring before you an EIR that they didn't think was certifiable. They wouldn't bring you a project that they're recommending adoption of all of the conditions, the RPD, the tract conditions, the oak tree, and the landmark tree permits, if they didn't feel and believe that this project was appropriate for this area and the applicant agreed to all these conditions. I request that you go forward with your staff recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Do we have any other questions of staff before we close the public hearing? Then, closing the public hearing. And Mr. Fox?
Yeah, let me start the discussion. One, I would call the council's attention to Exhibit 9. I think the city attorney pointed out that council initiated this process on June 22nd in 2010 to start the annexation process. And I think, as Ms. Schreiner points out, one of the reasons why we did that in terms of the concurrent processing was we wanted to look at an entire project. And I think we've done that in times in the past, and it serves the city very, very well. In this particular case, now that we do have the project in front of us, I'm inclined not to move forward with the annexation. And it's very simple. I think the staff has done a good job. I think the applicant has presented, at least from their perspective, a responsible project. But I don't see the public benefit in moving forward with the annexation. And so, and we can go into the impacts, you know, up to a decade of development, all those things that, having sat here for a while now, I can tell the council that projects that, by design, are developed over a long period of time, cause tremendous negative impacts to the surrounding neighbors, and something that people have and something that people have to endure for 10 years. This council will be hearing about that, and I think rightly so, when we have the discretion, at least based on what the city attorney has indicated to us, whether we want to deal with this property or not. So I'm going to move that we continue this hearing with the basis that we would direct staff and the city attorney to, in a sense, unwind our initiation of the annexation process. As Mr. Prescott points out, and I would agree, this is new ground. Normally, when we handle annexations, it's a very straightforward process. They're larger projects generally when we do that. And as I would say, there's generally public benefit to an annexation in terms of city utilities, sewers, city services. Those are reasons why you look at an annexation, and that's why they have spheres of influence and guidelines for order to the development. In this particular case, from my perspective, I don't see any public benefit to a small piece of property within a existing development, and the result is 14 homes. At least, that's the proposal. So my recommendation, my motion, is that we continue this hearing, I guess, on an open hearing basis, Ms. Noonan, or just continue it to a date to be determined?
It'd be better if we continue it to a date certain. Our next city council meeting is next week, and it's unlikely I'll be able to get through the legal process before then. And I think we have the reorg, the first meeting in December, so I'd recommend the second meeting in December.
All right, so that would be the soonest, from a practical standpoint, we could bring this item back? So that would be continued to December the 18th to allow the staff and the city attorney to look at how we would, in a sense, take action to not move forward with the annexation process. We want to do this right, and, you know, and I think we need a lot of staff to, time to look at exactly what the process is for the city to, in a sense, stop the annexation proceedings or the initiation of annexation proceedings. So that's my motion. And I really don't think it serves our purpose tonight to discuss the merits of the proposal in front of us. From my perspective, if we are put in a situation where we're forced to annex by LAVCO, then we're going to have to look at the project. But for the record, I would be interested in a scaled-down project on top of that because I just think the impacts are going to be too extreme for their surrounding neighborhood. So that's my motion.
Councilmember Bill de La Pena?
Thank you. I think I would need more information as to why we need to have another meeting in December, December 18th, when, in fact, we have an EIR before us that's waiting to be either certified or not certified, and it would not be the first EIR that was not certified by the city council. It has happened before. And because, as my colleague mentioned, a lower-impact project would probably be more tolerable, but that is exactly what the EIR is lacking, is an analysis of a lower-impact project. And the council can make that decision tonight. We don't have to wait until December. We can actually ask that a lower-impact project, a low-density project, be analyzed, be made part of the EIR. And as a result, the annexation would not go forward or the filing of an annexation would not go forward. So I'm not quite sure as to why we would wait, if we can make the decision tonight, to stop the annexation by not certifying the EIR.
Let me just address that. I asked the city attorney that exact point. Well, why don't I just let Ms. Noonan speak for the city with respect to why I'm recommending we take no action as opposed to certify or not certify. My recommendation, my motion, is to take no action on the EIR. Let me ask Ms. Noonan, if she can maybe comment to the council.
Sure. Certification of an EIR is required in order to approve a project. If the council's desire or inclination is to deny a project, you're not legally obligated to certify the EIR. Certification of an EIR indicates that the city council has reviewed the EIR and concludes that it is a good informational document. If you have concerns with the information that's provided in the EIR, the certification would not be appropriate. And it sounds like you're concerned that the alternates' analysis wasn't adequate. So that would be, if you don't believe that the EIR is adequate, that would be a reason not to certify it. But more importantly, if you're not going to move forward with the project, there's no legal basis or no legal requirement to certify the EIR.
Thank you. I knew that, but I'm glad that it was presented to the public. So again, and then I go back to as to why we can't make the decision tonight.
Are you, the decision to?
Either approve or deny the EIR without prejudice.
Well, I guess-
Yeah, my motion is, I'm going to be very clear. My motion is to take no action to continue this item. The advice of the city attorney is we're not legally required to take action on that. We have attorneys in the room on both sides. It's my intent that this goes in the direction that the council and the community, whether you're on either side of this, intends it to go. I don't intend to confuse this by taking an action that would compromise the legal aspect of it. If we're legally not required to take action, it seems to me that's the most conservative course of action to take. The other thing I would point out, there may be differences of opinion on the council on whether we have a complete EIR or not. So I don't know why we'd want to force a vote on something that we're not required to take action on. So that's why my motion is to basically just continue this hearing.
Mr. Price, did you have something to? Bill de La Pena, did you want to support the motion?
No, I'm not going to support the motion because I don't see that a delay is necessary when, in fact, we can go back to square one and have the both sides get together and work on an agreement. And we have enough evidence, in my opinion, not to certify the EIR. Thank you.
All right, then, we're voting on Mr. Fox's recommendation, basically unwinding the annexation. And we will continue the, we'll continue the meeting till, I think it's December 18th, the hearing.
Yeah, just final comment, or any other comments?
No, I'm going to just be supporting the motion.
Okay, yeah. Apparently, it's the intent of the council to not move forward with the annexation and, in its present form, certainly not have this proposed development. The reason behind the motion and the reason to continue is, it's simply we want to do it right. We want to make sure that all the issues that are addressed from a legal perspective, due process issues and, basically, this whole issue with LAVCO and the annexation, is done correctly. City staff needs time to do that. So it would be very simple, although maybe incorrect, to just vote no and move on down the road. We're advised by the city attorney, that's not the prudent course of action. So that's why we're taking this action this evening. Once the city attorney can advise the council on the correct path to go where we want to go, then we'll bring this back and we'll vote accordingly.
I need to add to that, simply because I did not hear the city attorney actually advise against not denying or against certifying the EIR. I saw, I heard no legal reason at all.
Well, what I'm recommending is that if, that there's no legal basis to certify an EIR if the project is going to be denied.
That's all I heard, exactly. Thank you very much.
Mr. Price?
Thank you. Yes, with that further explanation from Councilmember Fox there, I would be in support of the motion as well.
All right, vote please.
Madam city clerk, for the record, I'm voting against the motion, but I am also supporting no annexation. For the record. The motion carries 3-1. Councilmember Bill de La Pena dissenting.
There we have it. All right, we are on Department Report 9B, the Thousand Oaks Auto Mall Parking, Landscaping, and Other Public Improvements. Mr. Spurgeon will be presenting the report.
Mayor Irwin and City Council, this item before you is for public parking and street improvements. This is a project in the Auto Mall Business District and a request for council's approval to rebid the project. The need for public parking in the Auto Mall area has been identified for literally decades. And city and Auto Mall staff have been working together, especially over the last several years, to develop this project. And the need for additional public parking remains today, as it has for many years. The improvements that are proposed by this capital project include over 300 new additional public parking spaces as well as wayfinder signs, new landscaping, traffic calming measures, and pedestrian amenities. The project was previously bid in 2011, there we go. And after those bids came in, the project was reviewed in a value engineering workshop to identify, design alternatives to significantly reduce the project costs. And these primarily had to do with redesigning the retaining wall along the freeway. The bids were rejected in October 2011, and redesign for those cost savings recommendations was authorized earlier this year. Those redesign efforts are now complete, and so it's appropriate for us to request authorization to rebid. This current capital improvement budget, as well as previous budgets, have included appropriation for redevelopment funding to be used for this project. In March of 2011, a funding agreement between the city and the Auto Mall Association was approved. And this agreement was approved as an enforceable obligation by both the Redevelopment Agency Successor Oversight Board and the State Department of Finance through two rounds of the ROPS process. And ROPS is the Recognized Obligation Payment Schedule. This is a process that is conducted about every six months. The current, the current ROPS III resulted in questions from the State Department of Finance. So staff and representatives from the Auto Mall Association are scheduled to meet with Department of Finance next week to review those questions. Staff is very confident that we can justify the project continuing to go forward. The Auto Mall has expended funds relying on that agreement, and the city has continued with design efforts, again, relying on that agreement and in, as the agreement requires us to move forward with the project. Property has been acquired that's necessary for the project. And once we rebid the project, we can determine the true project costs and come back to city council with options for future funding as well as formation of a Community Facilities District. So in summary, the project costs are, for the capital project, is about 8.9 million. I would note that in addition to this, another about 180,000 has been expended in documented staff time and other consultant costs. In actual dollars expended to date, about 1.4 million. Over 400,000 by the Auto Mall Association and the rest by the city. There's been countless hours and other costs by both city staff and the Auto Mall Association as well over the last several years in moving this project forward. In terms of schedule, we would anticipate bidding, receiving bids early next year, reviewing the bids, and working through the CFD formation with an award recommendation being brought back to city council about May of next year, with construction requiring about 18 months. Our recommendation is to authorize the rebidding of the project. I would note that this is an important milestone that we need to show the Department of Finance that the project is moving forward pursuant to the funding agreement. But staff will wait to actually put the plans and specs out to bid until later this year, following Department of Finance's final decision on this ROPS III process. I would also note, City Council, you're not authorizing any expenditure appropriation of funding tonight. This is simply authorizing bidding of the project and allowing us to move forward. Any authorization for funding or appropriation will be brought back at a future date. So be happy to answer any questions. Chris Norman, our Assistant City Attorney, is with me on the dais as well for questions.
Thank you. Questions? Ms. Bill de La Pena?
Thank you. Good evening, gentlemen. I have a question regarding the 2.2 million dollars for the initial design phase. How much money have we expended thus far?
The design, through the design phase, including acquisition of property, 1.4 million is what's been expended.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
1.4 million. So this is the entire design, preliminary design, final design, the redesign for the value engineering-
And the acquisition of the properties?
An acquisition of property.
A property or properties?
One property has been acquired as of this date, and the remaining property is still under negotiations for acquisition.
Okay, I thought I read in the paper that it had been acquired. Maybe not, okay. All right, and then I was just wondering, with the decision, with the decision still pending and the city fighting the latest decision by Sacramento, by the state to deny the city's request, and the meeting pending, I believe, in a week, why are we making a decision on this now? Should we not wait until after the meeting on November 20th to come before the council with this?
I'll answer this. It's, what the Department of Finance has done is difficult to understand at this point, and a lot of other successor agencies are experiencing similar difficulties with what they thought were enforceable obligations. Attorneys addressing this issue have made it very clear that if we want to make a good case in front of the Department of Finance, that we show that any contingencies in the agreements are being pursued actively. And in our opinion, showing that the construction documents, council's taken action to put those out to bid will help fulfill some of those contingencies in that agreement to show the Department of Finance that this is a real agreement and that we intend to complete it.
Okay, that's what we've been told by the Finance Department, that we should do that?
Not by the Finance Department, but other attorneys who represent successor agencies are recommending that we do that.
Oh, okay. And thank you for clarifying that because I was wondering why we did that. And I'm going back to the 1.4 million dollars that Mr. Spurgeon mentioned. Of the 1.4 million dollars, how much of the city redevelopment dollars have been expended on this? Is it 1.4 or is it, is it less?
Actually, about 940,000 have been expended of the redevelopment agency funds. The balance of that, over 400,000, has been paid by the Auto Mall Association dealers. It's out of pocket for them.
And, thank you. And is the city confident or, well, confident that the Finance Department will rule in favor of the city and revise its initial decision?
I think from the way the language in AB 1484 is written, it meets a definition of an enforceable obligation. We're a little bit miffed at why the Department of Finance has decided not to approve this at this time. There is other recourse. If the Department of Finance chooses not to reconsider its decision, we will be bringing other options to council. Some of them may be legal recourse to the courts, for example. But we feel very strongly- But we feel very strongly this meets the definition. There are other items on the ROPS that were disapproved that we didn't feel strongly about, and we decided not to challenge those, but this one we feel very strongly about.
Okay. And then, I, I know that we've had, bid this before. We've had, we've voted on this to, to send it out for a bid before. So, we have a history that we think, or the city at least thinks, that this is a worthwhile project, and we have proof that we were actively pursuing this. Now, I'm, I'm not speaking for myself, but, and that in itself would not be enough evidence to make the case?
Having more evidence is always better, and we're going into an unknown. No one, so far, there's been these face-to-face meetings that you alluded to. We will be going to meet face-to-face with the Department of Finance on November 20th. Others have had meetings with the Department of Finance. They have not rendered a final decision on any of those meetings, so we don't know what they're going to do. But we want to put our best foot forward, provide as much evidence to show that we're pursuing this agreement.
Okay. And staff report mentions a Plan B, that you will come back in December. Should the ruling or the decision be unfavorable toward the city?
Yes, there'll be options to pursue in terms of challenging the Department of Finance's decision, or perhaps pursuing other funding mechanisms for the Auto Mall project.
Thank you.
Mr. Price?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to make sure that I understand clearly here. This particular project has survived ROPS I and II.
That is correct.
And it's this third recent round where DOF has changed their opinion for, or their ruling, for lack of a better--
It's even a little more odd than that, because as of today's date and until December 31st, DOF believes this is an enforceable obligation, because we're in the ROPS II period, and they approved it for that period. So, it's only for the next ROPS period, ROPS III, which covers January through June 30th of 2013, that they've preliminarily decided that it doesn't apply to that period.
So, this is clear as mud.
Exactly.
And obviously, your opinion is we have a strong case, and you feel confident that we're going to prevail there, and that, the other thing I think I heard you say is that by moving forward with the RFP, that, that will better position us for your arguments that, that you will make on the 20th.
I think it's important to show that the city has a commitment to fulfill the contingencies in the agreement. And one of those contingencies is to show that we will have a contract in place for the construction of the improvements, and this is the first step to make that happen.
Okay. The, the only other question or comment that I have is, and what you're saying is that there's no additional money to be expended prior to this meeting on the 20th. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
All right, we have three speaker cards. Our first speaker is Ms. Morata.
Good evening, Mayor Irwin, councilmembers and staff. Susan Morata, I'm the current president of the Thousand Oaks Auto Mall. It's been a while since I've been here to speak to you, but I'm back once again asking for your support of the Auto Mall project. It really doesn't matter what bureaucratic nonsense is going on in Sacramento right now with regards to the funding. The need is still there. The need that you supported for additional parking is definitely still there. The need for the pedestrian amenities is still there. The need for the landscaping improvements is still there. And you have to remember that the money that was set aside for this project originally came from tax dollars collected right here, and the majority of those tax dollars from the dealership property taxes. It's our money. It's our money. And you have to do everything in your power to keep that money in this community. It would be horrendous for that money to go into that black hole that we call our state budget. That money needs to stay in this community. The Auto Mall dealers have been investing millions of dollars in their dealerships to prepare for future growth. But we are relying that the city is going to provide this infrastructure with these public improvements, or else we're putting all this money into our dealerships for nothing. And I can tell you, if this project doesn't go forward, we don't have another option. We're doing everything we can in our own facilities, and we're going to be presenting some plans in the next couple of years that add levels of, of parking on our properties, but we need these public improvements. Without it, any potential growth is gone. The opportunity to hire more people or to provide more sales tax dollars is gone. And like staff said, by moving this project forward, it sends a message to Sacramento that says, "This is a viable project, and you cannot take that funding." So, thank you for listening, and thank you again for your support.
Thank you, Ms. Morata. Our next speaker is Norman Hoffman.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor. I am the attorney for the Thousand Oaks Auto Mall, and wanted to speak tonight just to reaffirm the commitment of the Thousand Oaks Auto Mall to go forward with the project. We definitely consider the contract to be an enforceable obligation, and our firm has rendered an opinion to the Thousand Oaks Auto Mall and shared it with the city to the effect that it is an enforceable contract. The, there are remedies available in the event the Department of Finance turns down the proposal. We believe that would be an unlawful forfeiture, and the law in California is quite, quite clear that we, the agreed party, has a right to contest any forfeiture, both the city for over a million and the Thousand Oaks Auto Mall for over 400,000 out of pocket, plus soft costs. So, we would be considering all options. We think the Thousand Oaks Auto Mall has reaffirmed its commitment at a recent meeting, and we look forward to the city reaffirming its commitment by allowing the bidding to go forward, to remove another potential obstacle to having the Department of Finance approve the request for ROPS III, which is the most inane system I've ever heard of, but we're working under it and with the Department of Finance to retain the money for the city of Thousand Oaks, rather than having it go to the general fund of the sovereign state of California. I think it's up to the council to benefit the community, as previously discussed by Mr. Spurgeon and Mrs. Morata, rather than have the money lost. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker is Mr. Kidway.
Nick Kidway, representing Concerned in Thousand Oaks, Honorable Counsel. First of all, I'd like to draw your attention that I did send an email, which is about 10 pages, about 1:00 PM, and I think it's, was in enough time for inclusion into your packet. In fact, I raised the issue that Mayor Portem raised about the city manager's meeting next Tuesday, and why this hearing is being held today. We all agree that parking is atrocious. I've been a vendor for 30 years, off and on at the mall, and the parking has been inadequate, but there is no need for a digital sign. And so, the Lord speaks in different ways, and so, the parking goes and the digital sign goes also. The issue here is, and I cannot believe that, that staff do not bring this up, thinking that the issue will go away, but the AB 27 times one was specific that August 2010, redevelopment agencies had no power to make any changes. And this affects, of course, this 6.2 million loan that you did. It affects $5 million for the Westside Properties, and it affects Caruso with the, with the zone chain that was done also last year. I'm glad that you are caught by the Department of Finance on just one issue, because all three are, are the same. But what you have done, which AB 27 was to avoid, was that the money that was in the redevelopment agency account was to be returned to the state. And it's very disgusting for anyone to attack our wonderful state and to call it a black hole or to, especially after we are a poster child of wasteful redevelopment money, and you just look at Caruso and the 13 stores that he has and pays $1 a year rent. So, what is needed is that this is supposed to be handled, besides the ROPS that will hopefully be denied next week by the Department of Finance, but these two other projects, as well as this, the controller is supposed to be handling this, and he's asleep at the switch. What needs to be done, and the citizens should really, I mean, wake up and take action, is that the governor needs to be responded to. And I've been told, if you send it to the email, it goes to a black hole. You fax and, and call, call the governor about these three things, that this money that belongs to the students, that belongs to the residents of, of the state, is, is being sent to special interests. And I think we will be able to succeed and win. I'm going to leave this over here. I don't know why it was not in part of the packet. Maybe the staff can tell me if it was turned in late.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. All right, do we have questions, staff? Motion? Mr. Fox?
Sure. I'll move the item 9B to move forward on the authorized staff to re-advertise the Auto Mall Parking, Landscaping, and Other Public Improvements project.
Comments? Ms. Bill De La Pena?
I, I prefer to wait until after the meeting next week, because the city has shown over and over again that it is serious about this project. We're just another, what is it, five, six days away from it. I don't see how much more of a difference it would make, so I will not support the motion.
Mr. Price?
Well, what I heard loud and clear from the staff is that it is their firm belief that by supporting this motion, that this is going to better position the city in making their argument to the Department of Finance, and for that reason, I would be in support of the motion.
And I too will be in support of the motion. This is, I mean, we've, we've gone over it again and again, a very, very important project. Auto Mall is one of our biggest tax generators, and anything we can do to help them continue to help the city, we should do. And as staff said, this does definitely help us in the arguments next week, so. Maker of the motion, do you have anything to say? All right, vote please.
The motion carries 3-1. Councilmember Bill De La Pena dissenting.
Item 11, City Council Successor Agency to Thousand Oaks Redevelopment Agency Reports There Are None. Council Issues and Recommendations, None. City Manager.
Madam, excuse me, Madam Mayor, members of the council, excuse me, our, our next council meeting will be next Tuesday night, November 20th. And at this point in time, we have one department report. It's the acquisition of a couple open space parcels. And that's about it, number of consent calendar items and so on. Also, to remind the, the council and the community, our very own Division III Cal Lutheran University football team won their league, and they'll be playing this Saturday as a home team, which is a big accomplishment, playing, I think it's North Central Illinois College, something like that, or state. So, it's a, a big Division III football game in the community, and I was asked by the university president to help get the word out. So, there it is. It'll likely be a sellout. Thank you.
First time ever. All right, no closed session, no public notices, and we are going to be adjourning to our regular meeting on November 20th. Good night, everybody.